Welcome to the Canton Planning Commission for March 7th. And as always, we like to begin our proceedings with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's see who's here. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the roll, please?
Sure. Commissioner Charia.
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger is absent. Commissioner Foster.
Good evening.
Good evening. Commissioner O'Conne is absent, if only I could speak. Commissioner Singh is absent. Commissioner Watkins.
Here.
Commissioner Weber.
Present.
Commissioners Zubor here, and Chairman Green.
Here.
And Commissioners.
We also have our planning staff.
The Commissioners Egenberger, O'Conne, and Singh had previously notified staff that they would be unable to attend this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. And that is our community planner, Patrick Sloan. And he's along with senior planner, Aaron Schluto. So we will begin tonight with staff on hand. We had our last meeting on February 7th. Do I hear a motion to accept those minutes from the meeting?
So moved.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioners Zubor and support by Commissioner Weber.
Excuse me.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That's done. Let's see. We have an agenda tonight.
Full agenda tonight?
We have six items on the agenda tonight, one of which is a public hearing. Do I hear a motion to accept tonight's agenda? Or do I have anything late from staff, anything to add?
Nothing to add, but at the very end of the agenda item, it's actually number nine on the third page, there's an update to the Planning Commission bylaws. And that's already on our agenda. I just wanted to note that that was at the end.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the agenda.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion to accept the agenda by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Foster, I'm sorry. Okay. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's get right into our first agenda item tonight. It is the blessing rezoning. We're considering a rezoning for a parcel of property which is located south of Warren Road between Ridge Road and Napier. And Patrick, could you give us more detail on that?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant proposes to rezone a parcel of property located on the south side of Warren Road and on the east side of Napier Road from rural residential to R1 single-family residential. Rural residential has a minimum lot size of five acres, and the R1 proposed district has a minimum lot size of one acre. The subject property is about 31 and a half acres, and it's shaped like a backwards L, and it has frontage on both Warren Road and Napier Road, although it's not a corner parcel. The proposal, if the property is rezoned to R1, would be to construct a development with detached, single-family homes. The surrounding area of the property, it's a mix of, there's R1 zoning to the north, north of Warren Road and Pilgrim Hills Estates. There's zoning of our rural residential to the south and to the east, and to the west is Superior Township, which is zoned agricultural. The future land use classification of the master plan is very low resident, very low-density residential, which is one dwelling unit per acre. And the one dwelling unit per acre is also the future land use map classification for the surrounding properties. When we review a rezoning application, the first thing that we look at is the standards in the zoning ordinance. And specifically, there are 10 standards in Section 27.06, subsection D4 of the zoning ordinance, that we review when we determine whether we would recommend approval of a rezoning. And the first standard is whether the proposed rezoning is in accordance with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance and the master plan. And based on the master plan policy of not just this site, but this area of the township being one dwelling unit per acre, the proposed rezoning to R1 is in accordance with the master plan in fitting both the use classification of single-family residential, as well as the density of one unit per acre. There are others, standards that relate to consistency with surrounding land uses and location to infrastructure. The surrounding land uses are predominantly single-family residential, so the proposed district of single-family residential is consistent as far as the proposed uses are concerned. With regarding the public infrastructure, the subject property is proposed to be serviced by water and sanitary sewer, which is available in the area. The subject property is located within a sewer district, so it's planned to eventually have sewer or access to sewer. We've gotten a number of questions and comments from the public in terms of, the public comment that was available for tonight's public hearing. And many of the comments related to the natural features of the site and some of the characteristics of the area. The site does have a creek that goes through it. It makes it a challenging site to develop, at the point at which a development application will come in. The site is heavily wooded, and there's some topography there with the creek. So there are a lot of natural features of the site, just the site features itself, that will be addressed in a little bit more detail if and when there's a development proposal for the site. So that's a little bit of background on the type of site that it is, and based on the aerial photo and the other materials in the packet, you can probably see how heavily wooded it is, and also has the creek going through it. At this point of the process for a rezoning, we don't receive a development application. It's just a simple application that has a map of the property, and there's no proposal for a site layout or any commitment for what exactly will be developed. If the site is rezoned to R1, then any of the uses and densities allowed in the district would be available for a future application by the applicant or the developer. So in terms of anything related to the site layout, or what exactly is proposed, that will come later in the process if the rezoning is successful. So some of the questions that may come up in terms of where things are proposed, or the site layout, they're premature at this point, just because we're at the very early stages of the rezoning. So that's why we'll be shorter on details in terms of future development prospects, just because those plans are not yet ready for review, and we're not at the stage of the review where those are reviewed. If the rezoning is approved, there may be a future application for a site plan, and perhaps even a plan development, which encourages open space. It actually requires a minimum of open space, but oftentimes, there's more open space than is required in a plan development. And the site would have a lot of characteristics that the township typically looks for in a plan development, where environmental features are preserved, and the allowable number of units are clustered, so there's not necessarily a density bonus with a plan development, but it's a way of preserving more open space and meeting the underlying zoning. But that's farther ahead if there is an application for a plan development, which, again, we're not at that stage. It's just a little bit of background in terms of the process that we typically see here in this room, and some of the things that would be upcoming if the rezoning is approved. So that concludes our staff presentation. Our recommendation is to approve the proposed rezoning due to it meeting the standards of Section 27.06D4 of the zoning ordinance, and being consistent with the future land use map of the master plan.
Thank you, Patrick. I wonder, though, if it would be important for all of us concerned, if you would kind of give us an overview as to where we are in tree usage, or development, or saving? Because this particular property that we're looking at has an awful lot of trees, as you've seen from the overhead. And things have changed because of the court system. And I think it's worthy of discussion as to where the township is at, as far as that's concerned.
Well, in every case, when there's a tree removal permit, the township will have to do an individual assessment for each property. There is still the requirement for a tree permit, so applicants that want to remove trees, they're still subject to the ordinance. The ordinance that requires a tree permit, that part of the ordinance is still in effect. Applicants are required to get a tree survey, so the same tree surveys that we've been used to getting, those are still required. And with the permit application and the tree survey, we take that, and we would have to do an individual assessment of every application to see what the impact of the tree removal is, what trees remain, what the site conditions are, what new trees are being put in, and what kinds of mitigation that we would look for in terms of additional trees to offset some of the environmental impacts that are caused by the tree removal. So rather than having just a simple ratio, which is the way that our ordinance has been written, it's much more complex than that. We do an individualized assessment on each site, because they'll all be a little bit different. So going forward on this, we don't really know how the ordinance will be applied, because we don't yet have a tree survey that'll show the quantities, the sizes, the species, and the conditions of all the trees on the site, as well as the type of layout that they may eventually develop that shows the proposed tree removal and any potential mitigation. So those are things that we would work on as they proceed through the development process if they make a development application.
Okay. Thank you for that. I think, even though we're not at that stage, because we're not dealing with site plan issues tonight, it's important to keep that in mind. Obviously, we all know what the intent here with this petition to rezone this property. But tonight, we're actually only looking at the rezoning application, going from rural residential to R1, which is in the master plan. But I know that there's a lot of people here that have some comments on that. So before we get into the public hearing, I'd like to ask you all to indulge us, because we do want to hear the valid points about this project or about this property. However, we want to avoid as much redundancy as possible. So if you have a point, and it has already been stated, you know, unless they have a different aspect of that point, or different avenue coming about that, then, you know, let's let that lie, because we have heard you, and we want to hear you, but we're not keeping score as to how many people said what. So just for the sake of everybody's time tonight, let's get through this, and get through this, you know, the most efficient way possible. With that, I would like.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Should we make a comment about all the comments we've received by electronic mail?
Oh, yes.
People know that we have them, and they're grabbing them.
Well, I think that Patrick already made notice of the electronic comments that were made, right?
Correct. And I can reiterate that, over the last several days, and maybe even a couple of weeks now, all of the comments that have been emailed to me, they have been forwarded to the planning commissioners. So those have been combined and PDFed, and sent to all planning commissioners. So as of yesterday, all the comments were sent, and then anything that was sent by 4:30 or a few minutes after, were also put into PDFs and sent to planning commissioners. And I don't think we've received any additional comments since then, so I think all comments received by email have been forwarded to planning commissioners.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
We're.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Zubor to open the public hearing, and support by Commissioner Weber. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now, if you do get up to the podium, we ask that you fill out the form that we have for you, and state your name and address, and your point. So with that said, first of all, Patrick, is there a representative of this property or the project there? Yes, sir, come on up. Welcome.
Good evening, Chairman Green and Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Sloan, for that introduction. My name is Mike Knowles. I'm with the Umlaur Group. I'm representing Polty Homes of Michigan tonight. You all have seen me probably 45, 50 times before in this room.
Thought you looked familiar.
Representing various applicants, Toll Brothers, Singh, Polty Homes, and several others. This is a well-worn path. You will see, if this development is successful, you will see me here at the podium sometime between eight and 12 times over the next 12 months, to hit all of the stops along the way. The first section is this rezoning from rural agricultural to R1, and that has three stops. You know, that has the Planning Commission and the Township Board, first and second readings, to enact a zoning change within the township. After that, we will submit a development application. I'll tell you a little bit about that tonight, and I have some concept plans that I'm willing to share with interested parties after the meeting, because that's not what we're here for tonight, as well as my business card. We have a long record of working with our neighbors. It's an interesting process, because at the very beginning, the very first meeting, I was just telling my wife and daughter that the very first meeting is always the, sort of, the most exciting, and the very last meeting is also the second most exciting part of this. Part of the reason that the first meeting is so interesting is because general folks in the public come at this blind, because of the way the process goes. You don't know what we're proposing. So you have to, your objections have to be, "Well, if there's going to be an entrance out on Napier, I think this. If there's going to be an entrance out on Warren, I think that. If there's going to be, you know, if they're going to cut down all the trees, if they're going to destroy the wetlands, if they're going to mangle the creek." You don't know what our plans are at this point in the process, because of the nature of the process. So a little bit about that. So today, what we're doing is we're proposing a zoning change that is compliant with the comprehensive master plan for Canton Township. What that means is the comprehensive plan is the long-term goals for the township. And it is redone every five years, sometimes on an interim basis more often. The last one, I believe, was 2017 here, with an update in 2020. Not sure if the update has been adopted, but if you look at both of those maps, you'll see that the area that we're talking about on this piece of property has always been master planned for one unit to the acre. And it is called "very low residential density." And I know that folks with large acreage, and farms, and horse farms, and have lived in the area for a long time, that those things might seem like a conflict. Very low, 31 units, oh my goodness, there's been nothing there for many, many, many years. The master plan, the comprehensive plan for land use, goes through a series of public meetings. Staff here at the township pours over data and makes recommendations about where things are moving, and how land is being used within the township. And they make recommendations. And then there's a guiding body of community leaders that make recommendations based on those staff reports. And then a series of public hearings are held at the Planning Commission level. Public meetings are held, excuse me, public meetings are held that invite the public in to make comment about how they want their community to grow, where they want the high density, where they want the commercial, where they want the industrial, where they want the residential, what type of residential. Those types of goals are set. And in this community, they're pretty much set in stone, because I have also been at this podium before, considering to change the master plan, unsuccessfully, I might add. And that's because a lot of thought goes into the master plan with a lot of input, and this community is very good at sticking to its comprehensive plan. So what are we doing here tonight? We are changing the zoning to conform with the comprehensive plan. So what happens after we leave tonight? Nothing. We don't have a development plan yet. The best is yet to come. And what that means is that, as Mr. Sloan pointed out, at some point in the future, very, very near future, if we're successful to get through this rezoning, we'll come with a development plan. And those concept plans, again, I will share with interested parties this evening, will come forward, and we will ask for, in this case, another zoning change. And it's one that Mr. Sloan pointed out tonight, which is the PDD. The PDD was enacted by Canton Township to get rid of the PUD. Okay, lots of letters. But what it was, was it was to make sure that the density that matches the master plan isn't increased, but they allow some variations on the property to be able to protect the natural features. Well, what does that mean? So instead of having a 50-foot rear yard setback and a 35-foot front yard setback, we may propose a 50-foot rear yard setback and a 25-foot front yard setback. What does that do? That moves our development in closer, tighter-knit homes, same number of homes, but what that allows us to do is to preserve trees, to preserve more open space. And to be able to go to that type of zoning, you have a minimum of 25% open space that is required. Our concept plan that I will share with interested folks tonight has right around 39%, well in excess of the 25% minimum. And the reason that I wanted to share that with you is because I have read all of the letters that came in, and I'm sure I'll hear from many more of you over the next year. And I've read them, I've highlighted them, I understand your concerns, I understand everybody's concern about traffic, about woodlands, about preserving the Tributary to the Fellows Creek, preserving the wetlands on-site, having appropriate buffers, not destroying the property, not destroying the vistas for the neighbors. We understand that. And that's what our proposal will do, is to try to respond to all of those. Some of those we anticipated, because they're, as I say, this is a well-worn path. I've been through this several times. And Polty Homes of Michigan hires me to be a conduit to the neighbors, the adjacent property owners, so that you can come to us and say, you know, "This is my concern. I'm going to be able to see right down this corridor, I'm going to see all these houses, and maybe we need to put some more screening there, some more buffering." One interesting thing about the PDD is that, as Mr. Sloan pointed out, or as Chairman Green and Mr. Sloan were discussing the tree ordinance, so that Canton Township tree ordinance has kind of been in flux with recent court decisions. All of my prior PDD projects that I brought through were compliant with the Township tree ordinance. Now, that is not a mandatory requirement, but the interesting thing about a PDD is that it gives you the opportunity for the township to say, "We'd really like you to comply with this." Or sometimes, there's other community benefits that they're after. "We would like you to pave Warren Road. It's a wreck where we crossed the bridge." Or, "We would like you to connect sidewalks, because this area of the township is not connected to certain sidewalks." Or a litany of items, some of the items that the public will bring up and bring to our attention over the course of what they're most concerned about. And so I encourage you to stick with us over this process. It's a long haul. And my, I've had the same cell phone, it's printed on my business card, I've had the same cell phone for 25 years. I've been doing this a very long time in five states. I'm local, I'm here in Plymouth, but I've been doing this for a very long time. We always try to respond to the neighbor's request, and any reasonable request will be considered. And so with that sort of explanation about who we are and what we do, back to the moment for what we're here for tonight. Tonight, we ask simply for one thing. The one thing that we ask tonight is to change the zoning to the comprehensive master plan density of one unit per acre. And again, there's no approval with a development plan, we're not going to start clearing trees, we have no other approvals, we have no development plan on record, as Mr. Sloan pointed out, because this is the first step in the process. We'll have three of these meetings before the real plan, the development plan, is actually presented before this body. So again, Mike Knowles, I'm here to answer any of your questions, and thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Knowles. I appreciate that. We did open the public hearing, right? All right. So what I'm going to do is very orderly. We're going to start from the front and work backward, and just by show of hand, we'll go one at a time, and those who would like to speak until that's exhausted. You, sir, you seem to be the first one. Come on up. Please state your name and address, please.
This is, I'm too tall here. Okay, I think you can hear me.
We can hear you just fine.
Yeah, we can hear you. My name's Alan Van Kirkhoff. I'm a citizen of Canton Township. I live at 44710 Heather Lane, it's over near the Joy and Sheldon area. And I'm also a member, and past board of director member of Friends of the Rouge, and of course, we all live in the Rouge watershed. And I wanted to talk about the unique features of this land. I keep hearing this is for residential, one-acre lots and that. But you've got a unique corner of Canton. In other words, most of Canton is in the glacier lake plain, it's very flat. I'm sure all developments have been involved, very flat. You have just, in a hilly part, very deep flood plains in there, you have the inter-defiance Glacier Moraine, only in Section 6, and a little bit in Section 7, right where the rezoning is. And of course, there's natural beauty roads over in the area of Section 5. And of course, Canton has 36 sections in its township, so this is pretty unique. I don't know about a general, this is, you know, generally zoned or planned for that, but this area is just very unique, and lots of slopes. And we also have a late succession forest right over near the, I guess you'd call it the inverted L, so it'd be the flat part over near Napier Road. Very unique forest. In fact, I was a past citizen of Plymouth Township, and they have two preserves in their inter-defiance Glacier Moraine ridge. That just means it's real hilly. Let's just say Glacier Moraine is a ridge, it's very hilly. And we have it here at the edge of Canton Township. But they have got two preserves, Miller Woods and Township Park. Those are beautiful beach maple forests, and that's what this area is, especially in the lower part of the L, the inverted L you call it. And I know I keep hearing about, "Well, we haven't got any plans yet, we don't, we can't get into details." But I walked the property, and already, there's been a road, there's been a road slashed through the property from Warren, and it goes right down the slope. Well, eventually, that's going to be an erosion problem. In fact, this is the kind of property where you just can't put a retention pond and say, "Well, that's it." You've got to try to make sure the water, as much water as possible during a storm, infiltrates into the land, the entire land. That means putting retention on the roads, that means bio swales between houses, and also rain gardens, et cetera. I mean, this little slash that's, well, it's not a little slash, it's pretty wide, that goes down into, and it crosses the Tributary Fellow Creek, and goes back up, a steep area. That's not the way things should be, no matter what the future plans are. That's right now, that happened right now.
Okay. Thank you very much for that.
Well.
I appreciate the delving into history, especially going back to the glacier ages.
Well, yes, it's, this Glacier Moraine was about 13,700 years ago. But the big thing is, is I wanted to ask you, what in rural residential, one question, how many, what's the minimum acreage that each lot can be? Like, I heard five acres.
Patrick, could you expound on that?
Yeah, the density in rural residential is five acres, minimum lot size.
And that's, the bottom line is, that's exactly the minimum I'd like to see. The maximum would be to preserve it. Come up with a unique, remember, there's no park in Canton Township that is in the ridge area. The closest is Patriot Park, Future Park, and that's a very flat part of the, we'll call it the wave terrace of several glacier lake, very flat. So I'd rather see it preserved as a park. And you can have a wildlife corridor going right over towards Patriot Park. Of course, that's not how private property usually goes, unfortunately, but the very minimum, this property is not very good for development, it's going to be very expensive. minimum, this property is not very good for development, it's going to be very expensive to preserve the water of the Rouge watershed, and I say, leave it rural residential.
All right, thank you very much.
Don't forget to fill out the form.
Yes, sir, don't forget to fill out our form, we need that.
Form.
If there's a form up there that you need to fill out.
There's a form you need to fill out, for the record.
And who was next?
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to participate. My name is Teresa Savage, and my husband and I live at 3976 Napier Road. My parents built the house in 1964, so I've been associated with the area for 58 years. I was an engineer at Hewlett Packard for 20 years, and my husband is currently an engineer for Ford Motor Company. The neighborhood consisting of Napier between Plymouth and Ford Road, and the dirt part of Warren to Napier, is a wonderfully unique rural area. There are magnificent woods, it's quiet, dark at night, and has a diverse variety of plants and animals. The houses are spread far apart, and it's about as in the country as you can get in Canton Township. The property that you're considering rezoning R1 is right in the middle of this neighborhood. About a third of the property is a gorgeous mature woods with towering landmark trees, about 40% of it has a stream that the surrounding area drains into. Adjacent to the property are 16 parcels with an average size of 4.45 acres each. The applicant uses an R1 development across the road to argue that there is an equivalent subdivision already there. This area is called Pilgrim Hills, it's a neighborhood designed in 1952 that has an average size of 1.64 acres per house. It has dirt roads, no entry signs, and no lighting. Pilgrim Hills' original architects preserved the woods to the greatest extent. It is misleading to call Pilgrim Hills an R1 subdivision. The applicant believes that developing a modern R1 subdivision at one house per acre is consistent with existing land uses. Modern R1 developments contain a denser footprint than anything in this area. For example, the development at the southwest corner of Warren and Ridge has an average lot size of .84 acres. Clearly, rezoning the property to allow a modern R1 development is not consistent land use compared with Pilgrim Hills, whose lots are 95% larger, and with the adjacent 16 parcels whose lots are 530% larger. I've seen Canton grow over the years, and have always felt that this is an inclusive community where there is something for everyone. Canton Township offers apartments, townhomes, condos, large houses, small houses, large lots, small lots, and rural living. I believe there's still one farm left. Now's the chance to prove that Canton Township values all of these types of neighborhoods, and will fight for the residents who live in them so they can continue to enjoy the atmosphere in which they live. Please do not allow the rezoning to take place. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, who else wants to speak? Anyone else have any other points?
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
Hold on, do we have anyone online that...
There are currently no hands raised. Keep an eye out.
All right, sir, come on up.
I'm Zimmerman, I live at 7227 Berkland, right across the street from the entry of this future subdivision. Is this thing sold already? Have you bought it? It's Polte the owners?
Yeah, it's, you can answer the question if you like.
The property has not closed. Typically, Polte and all of our public builders wait until they've gotten all of their entitlement approvals and permits in place before they settle.
Okay. A couple more things. The road there, for the hill, coming down that road, every winter, it's terrible, it's horrible.
Which road are you talking about?
Talking about Warren, coming down the hill, right where the entrance will be.
Okay.
A minimum, a half dozen times a winter, people are stranded there for half day, whole day. It's got to be blacktopped, if anything. That bridge there, the gravel's built up to the top of the guardrail, where, you know, it's very unsafe. Now, the whole thing needs to be looked at. And I agree with the first gentleman, Patriot Park's used maybe by, what, 20 people a year? It's flat, blacktop's there, it'd be easier to do. I don't know how many acres are there, but...
Okay.
Consider it, please.
Thank you very much, and yeah, please fill out our form. Yes, sir, come on up.
My name is Chuck Majanka, I've been out there since, right along that parcel that's trying to be sold, developed, don't agree with having something R1, because you're going to put, as Polte has a reputation of putting homes all the way up the front, look at the one that's on the corner of Warren and Ridge. Traffic is increased, you're going to need a light there pretty soon, because accidents are going to happen. I live right alongside this parcel. Come out, have any of you been out there to look at this land? You have, but you haven't, so you don't know what you're doing. Have you been out there?
I go out there a lot, I go out there a lot.
Well, you know the land then, come and walk my property, and you can see the slope. I don't need a septic tank to, or, water runs naturally down, and so I don't need any kind of sump pump to push the water out to the front. So, since 1978, moved in, been there, haven't had a problem, kids used to play in there, now they're grown, my oldest is 53. So, if you're going to develop a piece of property, and you take this, you take this property the way it sits, why in the hell do you want to put an R1 in the middle of RR? And what kind of development is? You've got to go out and look at it. It's tree-lined, we've got some old trees that are sticking up, beautiful. I've got pine trees right along the side, what's going to happen when he does the development? Because he's not committing right now, he's going to knock everything down. I'm going to have to look at houses along the side. You're going to do a setback where we are right now? Houses are setting back right here, all the way back, and I've got a nice yard in the back and in the front. I used my tractor to cut all this grass, been doing it, used to have a horse and a pony, have a barn back there, now I'm going to have to look at, and I can't see how you're going to develop this back here. So go out and look at the property, if you've been out there, you folks need to go out and look at it. Leave it the way it is. Why in the heck, they're developing the property down there, where there's pavement, we have a dirt road that gets plowed three days after everybody else, because the county or the township, township doesn't have any graders, so we have to count on the county, the county comes in and says, we can't do your road, because we have, the blade on here is just for blacktop or cement. So take a look at the property you're trying to develop, if you're not familiar, don't get involved in trying to sell it to somebody that wants to put in one house per acre.
Well, sir, you're...
We've got too many already, so...
You're not looking at the property owners, what you're looking at is the township.
They're going to look at it, you know, when they can grab ahold of it, they're going to do it.
So you would need to appeal to the property owners on that, in terms of, you would need to appeal to the property owners on whether or not they sell their property.
I certainly would do that, but I know what's going to happen when they, I'm going to have to look through my tree line there, and I'm going to see homes.
Right.
If they want to do it, fine, increase the amount of homes you put in there to, you know, maybe two acres. Right now, I'd rather see it stay RR, and you put three houses in there, because you're not going to do, you're probably not going to be able to do anything down here. You've got to go walk that land and see all the terrain down there, and everything runs down. I don't have to have, so, let's take a serious look at it, instead of everybody coming in and saying, hey, let's grab this land. If you have a program, then let's look at it a little harder before you start changing, you know, our property out there.
Were you aware when we did the master planning of that area?
No, you know, you...
Because that's where a lot of this initiative takes place.
Well, why don't you, when you're going to do something, come to the people that are affected and say...
Those notices are always...
No, never got, it's the first time, you know, it took, the lady that was up here, I got a nice note from her, never get any from the township, and I've been over here many times to listen, but if you haven't been out there to look at something that's going to be, a lot of people are affected by it, and you've got people that are across the street.
Maybe you missed the notices, but the township is required legally to make those notices to a certain radius of the people affected.
Yeah, but it sounds like tonight, you know, you're already making up your minds that you're going to go to...
No, no, we're not.
No, actually, we're not.
It sounds like it, so...
Sir, could you state your address for the record, please, and fill out the form?
What's that?
You didn't tell us your address when you first came up.
51015 Warren Road.
Okay, thank you.
But anyway, come out and knock on my door, and I'll walk you to property there alongside, I'll walk you along the edge, you'll see that the terrain is natural, it runs down, and that's what, they're going to have to do a lot of moving, if they move a lot of earth, we're going to have a problem.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Patrick, could you maybe explain what the, I mean, very briefly, what the master planning process is, because I think there's a misunderstanding of what we're talking about.
Sure, the master plan, it's the adopted land use plan for the township, and it covers all 36 square miles of the township, and it covers an array of different uses, commercial, residential, industrial, institutional, public uses, and everything from low densities to high densities. And we have every type of land use, almost every type of land use that you can think of, and so our plan accounts for a number of different future zoning districts and future land use policies. The master plan, it's a policy guide, in some areas it's general, some areas it's more specific. The areas where it tends to be a little bit more general with the policies, a lot of those we find ourselves applying during the site plan review process, during the plan development review process, in terms of transportation, natural features, things like that. Some of the policies are more specific, in the case of density, our future land use map is very specific in terms of the density for residential areas. And it's a, the master plan, it's a guide for future decisions. The zoning ordinance, it's our ordinance, it's our law, and part of the zoning ordinance is the zoning map. So what's before the planning commission this evening as a rezoning, it's technically an amendment application to the zoning map, it's a zoning ordinance amendment change. And so, we're proposing, this evening's application is to change the ordinance to rezone a piece of property, and based on the master plan policies, which are adopted every five years, it's a continuing standing document, but it's something that's updated at least every five years, sometimes more frequent.
And the process is very similar to this, am I correct? By public hearing, it is, we go through a process of approval, and through the township trustees, it's not a quick and overnight process.
And everyone is invited.
And the master plan was updated in 2017, correct?
That's correct.
And it will be updated again this 2022?
Yeah, starting this year, we'll be starting the amendment update process for the master plan.
And when we did it in 2017, I remember there were very minimal changes made to the master plan, because you can't make drastic changes within a master plan, am I remember that correctly?
Looking at the 2017 adoption, there were very few changes made in that master plan. I think the last comprehensive update of the master plan where there were significant changes was far earlier than that, I forget what year, but there weren't many in 2017 when it was updated.
Yeah. Notices for that go out into, in like Focus magazine, correct? In the Focus newsletter that is mailed?
I think it did in 2017, I wasn't here in 2017. The minimum public participation for a master plan is to notice a public hearing in the newspaper. Most of the time, communities will go above and beyond, so for example, the newsletter, and sometimes on cable, or sometimes mailers, or other ways of getting the word out there. We've got a robust public participation plan that we'll propose in terms of the 2022 update, but the 2017, I think they had a, they had a public forum, and I think they advertised, but I don't know how far and wide the advertising went when that was updated in 2017.
Vice Chairman Weber, you had a point?
I guess, I guess, the thing that, what I want to emphasize that Patrick just pointed out is, the master plan, as he said, is a guide, that's the key word, and the zoning ordinance is the law. So when we're talking about the master plan, just because we say something is dictated in the master plan, that does not necessarily mean that that's the way it's got to be. So, just so everyone understands what the difference is between the two documents.
Okay, all right. Come on up.
My name's Julie Dulces at 7680 Thornwood Street, and I'm really happy to hear you say that the difference between the law and what the master plan is, that's promising. Hopefully, you guys will all, you know, be able to take in what everybody's come here to see, obviously, we came in pretty full force to try to protect what we've all, the neighborhood that we love. I know there's been a lot of great points that have been brought up, I have a couple of extra points, but I did have one question, as far as the tree conservation, you guys were talking about that, one of the things that you had mentioned was that it's almost more of a suggestion now than something that's actually followed. So my concern is that, to what degree are you going to hold them accountable for preserving the trees because of the vast amount of woods that would be removed? And then also, you know, what happens, I don't know if there's wildlife conservation, are we thinking about that, is that even something that we look into with Canton? And I say that because when the development went in at Ridge and Warren, the deer population shifted. I'm sure all of us have seen a very large increase in deer population, which we love, is part of the reason that we live into our neighborhood, but we're removing even more places for the deer to live, as well as wild turkey and other wildlife that lives in the area. But also, there's, like, has been mentioned, but just to take it a little bit step further, I know that we talked about parks and stuff, that's probably not going to happen, that's the landowners. Keeping it zoned, one house per five acres, this is a neighborhood, this little corner of Canton is where most, much of Canton comes to enjoy a park that's not a park. So we've got bike clubs that park on the corner of Napier and Ann Arbor, and ride their bikes through our dirt road neighborhoods. We've got the Plymouth-Canton track teams that bus and van their children in, they park over by Plymouth Orchards, and also off of Napier and Ann Arbor to run track through our neighborhoods. And so, the concern is, you know, I know it was mentioned potentially paving Warren Road, that is a concern for me and some of the other folks in this room, because as of right now, we have a lot of trouble keeping people at the posted speed limits, as is at the 25 miles per hour coming through both Warren and Napier Road. And the hill, like was mentioned earlier, is very steep, and it's very much a blind spot, and so to pave that road, we're going to have traffic coming, blowing through there at 45, 50 miles per hour, because that's what people are already used to driving on the other parts of Ford Road, and then further east on Warren Road. So there's obviously some concern there. So I wanted to share that, but, you know, again, I just wanted to, you know, leave to you all, as far as the tree conservation goes, you know, I know that we're talking about it, but it's a suggestion, and so if they come in in the development and they decide they want to remove more, it sounds like they may have the ability to do that without discretion from the panel here, so I do hope that that will be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir, come on up.
If you spoke, please fill out a form.
My name's Paul Benson, I'm at 51256 Murray Hill in Pilgrim Hills, and... And it seems to me like, okay, there's gonna be a lot more, a lot more people coming down Warren Road. And as been mentioned before, Warren Road, it's a big hill. I know personally, no young man that rolled his vehicle on that hill. It's very icy. It's so bad in the wintertime that the police actually block it. Right? The police actually block it, it's so dangerous. Okay? It seems to me that if this subdivision comes in there with all that, that many more people, that road's gonna have to be widened. It's gonna have to be improved a bunch for it to be safe. So that involves more trees, widening the road, and all that, so that's something to be considered. Because that's, as you can see here, there, these people are, we really like the area we're in. So it's gonna change a lot. It's gonna change the road, I would think, to keep it safe. It's gonna have to be widened, it's gonna have to be paved, it's gonna have to be, all that stuff done, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yes, come on up.
My name is Michelle Richards. I live at 7952 Thornwood in the Pilgrim Hills subdivision. And I think part of the problem is that we've relegated zoning to acronyms and letters, and we don't provide any description of what that really means. So what is rural residential? And I don't mean, okay, well, it's a minimum of five acres. What does that really mean? Does it capture the area and the environment? And then to just say, well, we're gonna rezone to R1, one acre per house, seems consistent with the master plan. I'm thrilled that, that you've provided the distinction between guidelines and law, but there has to be room in this planning commission to think about whether it captures the environment and the character of the area. We're not just RR1s and RR1s. We have houses and families that have lived here for 50 years. The, I think, one of our neighbors, somebody correct me, but posted to Facebook this week that Murray Hill is actually named from the, one of the gentlemen that signed our state into existence. And so we have history, we have quality and features of this area that can be found nowhere else in Canton. When people come visit me, they wanna know where they are. You know, you drive in, and it feels like you're up north. So if you're gonna move us from RR1 and label us to an R1 subdivision, I agree with the woman that spoke earlier. It's, we're, every house in that neighborhood is different. Every house looks different. The acreage is wildly different. We, we know we have neighbors, but we don't see or hear each other because of the environment and the quality of the subdivision. We know what Pulte's gonna put in, we all know what Pulte's gonna put in. It's gonna be a section of 30 houses, they're all gonna look the same. There's no sidewalks. It's not that we are concerned about our connectability to sidewalks. We don't have sidewalks. We have a gravel road that is enjoyed by the Plymouth-Canton-Salem cross-country teams, by bicycle clubs. I take my family riding up to the cider mill. That road on Warren that takes people from paved to not paved, the fall is horrible for us, because that's when the cider mill traffic comes in. They're going 50 miles an hour, they don't know where they are. We're gonna triple, quadruple the amount of traffic in that area, and the answer isn't to just pave it, because I don't wanna be an R1 subdivision. I wanna be a rural residential subdivision with properties that are varied in nature, that capture the environment, that protect the wildlife, that protect the, the topography, that protect the trees, and that should be an interest we have. This isn't progress.
Okay, thank you very much.
My name's Marcus Ferguson. I live at 7560 Berklin Drive in, in the Pilgrim Hills sub that we're talking about. I wasn't gonna come up here today. I did not come here to talk. I think I told my wife, I said, they better not have a be talk, right? I'm not talking. But I see people getting up here who also didn't plan to talk, and it just encouraged me to say, you know what? Pulte homes, and I got no offense, you know, I love people, do what you gotta do to make money, we all understand the business, but I just wanna say, that area is so unique. The people in your subdivisions that you've built, get up in the morning and put their bike in their car and drive out to our area and ride them. And they go for runs, and they come out to where we're at, to get away from that. And I'm not knocking that, but I'm saying that's, that's the little pit we, little bit we have left of Canton where people go, when people come to my house, they go, this is Canton? Are you kidding me? They, they can't believe it, because it's so unique, and that's a huge positive for Canton, that we can say that. That we're five minutes from Home Depot, but yet people come over and you're having a campfire, and they go, what do you got, 18 acres? I've had people say that. What do you have, 18 acres? I go, no, I have an acre and a half. There's a house over there, over there, and they go, I can't see anything. I go, love it here for that. And I just think we need to keep that, we need to keep that in can. The roads, we could hit that a million, a million times. I mean, I don't know how Canton is even thinking of adding one more car to any road. I mean, if you've driven down Canton Center, and I don't know who's responsible for that, but if some of us don't have a flat when we go out there, I'll be shocked. We should not be thinking, where can we put more people and more houses in Canton? So I just wanna one-up the, for the sake of the beauty of the area, I just think we need to leave it the way it is.
Thank you.
Can you, can you give your, excuse me, your name and address?
Pardon me?
Your name and address?
Yeah, I started with that. 7560 Berklin.
Lady, come on up.
My name is Elaine Jarris. I live at 51326 Murray Hill Drive in the subdivision known as Pilgrim Hills, but we don't have a sign, because we know where we live. I have a question about the PDD, because once upon a time in a faraway land, I believed zoning was based on buildable land, not just land. So does any, can anybody tell me how much of this 30 acres is actually buildable? Because the PDD, when I was young and naive, because I've been up here a few times myself, I thought a PDD was a good thing, because you smashed all the homes together. But if it's 30 acres and only 10 of it is buildable, then you should be putting 10 houses on it. So can, can someone tell me how much of this property is buildable?
I don't think we have a designation like that that is at our disposal in terms of, because that would, that would call for a declaration of what's buildable and what's not. Development community, and you can speak to this, sir, because you're in that community, can work around a lot of issues that you might consider not buildable, and maybe he'd not consider it buildable, but you work around them and you keep them as beauty features.
Right, but that's, that's why the PDD, the PDD was not only introduced to appease us to put the houses together.
Right.
It was also introduced to appease builders so they could put more houses on acreage. So I just wanted to get that out there.
Well, no, that, that's why, that's why you do that, is so that you can work around the issues of that property, and-
How about we compromise and go one house per two and a half?
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Anyone else?
My name is William Martel. I'm at 51311 Hanford. I have more of a statement than a question or anything else. I guess what my main thing would be is, you're asking to put 31 houses in when you're gonna piss off 100 people, 100 houses. Is it worth it?
Okay, thank you. Did you, yeah, okay. Anyone else? Yes, come on up.
Hi, my name is Sarah Chapman. I live at 49780 Hanford. And I just wanted to put in my experience. I live right behind the subdivision that was put in at Warren and Ridge, and since that subdivision has been put in, our yard has been extremely wet. We, there's a section of our yard that does not get dry, except for maybe like a week in August, right, when it's the driest. So what I'm concerned about is, especially if this area, since the area is so hilly, since there is so much water flow going through there, my concern would be that the people who live around there now are gonna have so much more water runoff, like we have had in our yard, that it's gonna be flood prone, right? I mean, we don't, no one wants that. And then the other thing is, again, just to mention the natural beauty of the area and its unique properties. I just wanted to put my two cents in there and bring up the fact that floodplains are an issue, and if we put more houses in, it's just gonna make the problem worse. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone?
We have two on Zoom that have their hands raised.
Come on up, and then we will hear who's on Zoom. Oh, we need more sheets, more sign-in forms.
I wanna say your name and address, if we can write that down.
Sure. Jean Roberts, 3624 Napier. I don't want to go over what everybody else says, but I think everybody has been very eloquent, and I think that point has been driven home. I have a letter from Wayne County Drain Commissioner regarding the Fellow Creek Drain, Wednesday, October 17th, 2018. They sent us residents, most of us, I would assume, the drainage district, and they have, they have the area in question outlined that this is a large drainage district. I'm sorry, I don't have copies. I'll be happy to give if somebody wants to make a copy for yourselves. I just wanna know, how is that gonna be addressed if we go from the RR to R1? You are smack dab right in the middle of this.
Well, that would be part of the planning process and the site plan review, et cetera, et cetera, if we get to that point. You know, that would be something, those are issues that engineering-wise would take place at that time. We're not at that stage.
I, I understand. I just wanna say, do you have it in your records, your files, and so forth, that the Wayne County Drain Commission has a stake in this for our downriver communities?
Right.
Said, I'll just paraphrase this here, that maintenance, improvement, and so forth, public health, convenience, welfare, main, all the other things we have to do with our wetlands is affecting Plymouth Township, parts of Canton Township, and Westland, and other communities down river. What we do here affects those individuals just like ourselves. So if anybody would like a copy, I'd be happy to give it to anybody here.
Patrick, I would assume our engineering department probably has that documentation, correct?
Yeah, they, they get them frequently whenever there's maintenance, or there's establishment of a district, or a maintenance project on a district. That's, that's a question for our engineering division.
I would also like to stick with RR, one home, five acres.
Thank you very much.
Not have customers that wanna live on five acres. I know you're not Pulte themselves. I would love to live on 80 acres. Don't you, don't you have people? I mean, I know the money is in the square footage, but there's gotta be people.
Thank you so much. We need to move on. All right, Patrick, you said you have someone on Zoom that would like to speak?
Yeah, anyone on Zoom, if you'd like to speak, please have your hand raised. I know some have commented in the chat, but we would have to have the hands raised. The first one is Paula Marolis. I, I hope I pronounced that correctly. Paula, you're able to speak, if you wanna take yourself off of mute.
This is Paula Marolis Snyder. I'm hoping that the panel can hear me okay before I start.
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. My name is Paula Marolis Snyder, and I reside at 3900 Napier Road. That is parcel 99007-00. It's the largest property there listed on your, your zoning map, and two sides of our property would be affected by this proposed rezoning. I wanna preface what I'm gonna say with, I've been in the Canton community since 1972. I was raised in Windsor Park. I have owned a home in Brookside Village, Sunflower, Buckingham, and we raised our children in Windsor Park. So I'm very, very familiar with Canton and the changes that have occurred around here since 1972. By profession, I'm an insurance executive with Chubb, the largest publicly traded property and casualty insurance company in the world. I've been in the insurance business over 30 years. I'm a licensed property and casualty agent for the state of Michigan and other states, and during, during my career that spans over three decades, I've worked for two insurance agencies in the Plymouth and the Canton area, and I've spent years placing property insurance for residents and businesses throughout Michigan. I preface this because I have a grave concern for the rezoning proposed of this land. The acreage proposed for this development is a watershed. It is not flat farmland. As such, there is potential for flooding in the area and beyond if this natural area is manually revised. We have seen similar problems in neighboring communities such as La Bonia, Westland, Taylor, Dearborn Heights, Clinton Township, and many others. I, I actually question why a municipality builder, architect, engineer firm, or a litany of other entities would want to open themselves up to any potentially, you know, liability for such endeavor. The litigation alone is lengthy and expensive, let alone any settlements. The insurance industry has seen a large increase in area water and flood events, and has the data to support this. The industry deals with this in different ways, potentially with sewer backup or flood insurance on property insurance policies. Some lenders are requiring the purchase of this coverage, and properties that fall within a flood zone or even near inland waters are not being excluded. The cost for such coverage is expensive and increasing due to the number of claims that we are seeing. Construction typically signals FEMA to review or change zone mapping for flooding. Additionally, many claims of this type are not covered by insurance for various reasons. Many homes and the location of this proposed project have living space in lower levels and walkout basements. Fellow's Creek runs right through this proposed rezone area. The other matters include increased traffic, diminished road conditions, construction debris, extensive noise, stress to current infrastructure such as the bridges over the two creeks, potentially increased taxes, and a decreased safety to the children and residents of the area. The zoning of this area of residential, rural residential, excuse me, has been in place for many, many years and with good reason. We don't see any reason to rezon this land and feel doing so will hurt the current residents of the area, the nature and the wildlife that inhabit the acreage currently, and the loss of the natural woods will be catastrophic and will never be replaced to its present state in our lifetime. The water issue is very valid, and even with the technology in place and the expertise in construction and all that good stuff, mistakes happen. I spent three decades reading the extensive class action lawsuits, seeing the devastation of homeowners due to loss of property, plunging property values, and in some cases, homes that cannot be sold due to known issues with grading and water and flooding. There's 33 acres that Van Esley Real Estate has for sale at lots between, excuse me, between Cherry and Ford. I don't frankly see how any building can be done on this. We've got landmark trees, we have protected and endangered species that are on the DNR list, and it's just not a, a good proposal. I would say, and I would say that many of the residents in the area, taxpayers who love this area and love the township of Canton are completely against this. We thank you for hearing us, and we really hope that you walk the property and see that this is actually a natural woods. This is not a place to build more homes. The school system, I, I'm not sure can handle the additional residents. I do have many friends that are teachers in the district, and frankly, when they heard this, they couldn't believe it. We don't know where the kids are gonna go to school. So anyway, thank you for hearing us, thank you for your consideration, and we are against any rezoning to this parcel.
Thank you. Patrick? Patrick?
Next up, we have Glenn Kramer. Glenn, you're able to talk, if you wanna take yourself off of mute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Glenn Kramer, I live at 636 Jenner Downtown Plymouth, and I'm a co-owner of property at 51111 Warren Road at the top of the hill west. I concur with everything that Paula has said, and the gal that spoke earlier, Teresa, everything that they've said, I concur with. And that's all I need to say.
Next, Patrick.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Kayla Shepherd. Kayla, if you wanna take yourself off of mute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I live- Kayla, if you want to take yourself off of mute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I live at 3700 Napier Road, and my husband and I just moved in about two years ago. We have three kids. We love the area. We actually moved here from Livonia because we love the land. We have three acres, and, you know, we have to say that this is something that we are considering, basically like it's a big thing for us, because this is a reason why we came out this way. I just have to say, please consider, you know, keeping this rural and not residential. Thank you.
Thank you.[654.82][654.82](APPLAUSE). Patrick, anymore?
I don't see any other hands raised in the audience on Zoom.
All right, this gentleman in front has something to say.
Hello, my name's Paul West. I live at 4540 Napier Road. And I, I have to wonder if our, our misalignment tonight is not so much about the master plan, it's the vision that drove that master plan. And I wonder if anyone here can even clearly articulate succinctly, what is the vision that drove this plan, that drove one, one acre per house, all the way into the woods where we live? You, you don't have to answer that if you, unless you know off the top of your head. But I think it's important that we all get aligned on the vision together, and I think when we talk about this neighborhood, we really, I think we need to think 10, 15, 20 years into the future, and what our vision is for the neighborhood, and, and what role does that neighborhood, does this neighborhood play in the rest of the township? You know, right, right now, I think folks just outside of our neighborhood thinks these are the folks who just, the nature lovers, or the folks who just like, the tree huggers, who just love to live in the, in the woods, and don't want to be bothered with anyone. I, I don't know if we're gonna be able to sustain all of that into the future, but I, I do know that even right now, what the township said that this neighborhood is supposed to be with the Natural Beauty Road and whatnot, the township isn't honoring its commitment to maintain what it even said it should be. Two, two or three doors up the road on Napier from where I live, a gentleman put a, an ice skating rink 10 feet off of Napier Road, after cutting all the trees which were not allowed to be cut, okay, put this thing, strung probably 100, 150 lights around this, lights it up at night, and his young, young son is learning to play hockey at night. And I, I get that, I, it's a wonderful thing, but that is not what is permitted on Napier Road, okay? So I would ask, number one, that the township start really enforcing, you know, the rules and everything else that goes along with the Natural Beauty Road. The other thing I'm wondering about is, why are we doing this development? Is there some bottom line target, metric, that we're trying to hit here in terms of tax revenue? Because I, I would like to point something else out here. The neighbor, the next door neighbor to us, that, that house was just purchased for $2 million. Now, I defy you to find another, a half a dozen other houses in Canton Township that have gone for that much money recently. I defy you to find even one, okay? That speaks to the value that, that property has. There, there's sort of an idyllic vision of a town and country lifestyle that Americans have. This community represents that, and that carries a value, okay? It's not measured in numbers of houses, it's measured in quality of, of living on a particular parcel of land, okay? And I think we need to start thinking differently about our neighborhood. Maybe it's not something that's a volume product, okay, or even a near-luxury product. Maybe it is something much more than that over time. So, so there's a lot of things to think about. I think this neighborhood also, in the future, 15, 20 years, could be a leader in terms of demonstrating sustainability in architecture, the design of the house. A lot of these houses are getting old, they're gonna need retrofitted, maybe some of them might be completely razed, torn down, and new ones built. Do we want Pulte coming in and other developers? And I, I'm not discounting what you guys do, I see the value, but, but, or do we want the great architects of the world coming in and designing one-off houses, okay, sustainable houses, you know, that, that will help this community put Canton Township on a bigger map, a national map, where you read about Canton Township in Architectural Digest, and not, not just see homes, you know, at, at the Kroger checkout counter, okay, on some pamphlet?
Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate that.[922.56][922.56](APPLAUSE). And normally, at this point, I wouldn't, I wouldn't comment on this, except to say that, of the people on the day today, I'm probably the, the only one that can speak to some of the planning aspect, because you, you raised that question, you know, was, was this planned? The reason that we are having an issue, or a potential discussion of going from RR to R1, is because of the planning aspect. As you may well know, many of the other neighborhoods in Canton, and other parts of Canton, are R3, we've gone to R6 in some situations, et cetera. We kept the northwest quadrant low, and I've been on, on the Planning Commission since 2003, and this began before me, but we kept the northwest quadrant low in density for the reason to keep a certain amount of, of difference between the other, other parts of, of the township, quite honestly, and to have a variety of homes, and a variety of price pointing, et cetera, et cetera, in our 36 square miles, where people could come and live, and, and, and work, and, and stay. You know, because Canton at one time was losing a lot of people to Plymouth, they would come into Canton because Canton at that time only had basically starter homes. And then as their, their incomes grew, et cetera, et cetera, they moved to Plymouth and Northville, et cetera, et cetera. So, there was a lot of planning that went on to create an environment where a lot of different levels could be met within Canton, so that people could stay in Canton. And the northwest quadrant was purposely kept low for that reason, because they knew that there were certain types of houses that, that, you know, we needed to have, that were certain price points, or higher, certain property, you know, issues, et cetera, et cetera. So, just to, to let you know, this isn't an overnight thought process, this is a culmination of many, many years going forward. And as Vice Chair Weber said, we're dealing with a guideline, the, the, the master plan is a guideline for the future, but it doesn't say that we have to do that, and, and so we have to, you know, and we're hearing from you folks, and that gives us a viewpoint as to, you know, what we do. So just, just want to let you know that, okay? Anyone else have any comments? Haven't you been up already?
Yeah, I've been up already.
All right, very quickly, very quickly. I think you led us off.
Friends of the Rouge, one thing that hasn't, well, my name's Alan Van Kirk, 4471 Heather Lane. One thing that hasn't been mentioned is that this property is totally landlocked by floodplain. And I, I mentioned that that road, that little slash of a road they put through is already gonna be erosion problem. That's the other thing, erosion, okay? There's gonna be a problem not only with flooding downstream, but erosion in that area. The second thing is, is a question, when is the zoning or the master plan process starting? When, what month are, I'm just curious.
Patrick, when's our, when are we gonna start that again?
We don't have an official kickoff date. We're hoping sometime this spring is when we'll start the process. The process will probably take anywhere from 12 to 18 months, so by the time we get to looking at future land use decisions, that, that will be long after we do the kickoff, because the kickoff, we're also gonna have a lot of public participation before we start formulating some of those policies. So, we, we hope to advertise that in the newsletter, online, a number of different forums, so that will be well-publicized.
Yeah, I would love to personally be part of that process, because I think that whole west, northwest corner, which is ridge, moraine country, very hilly, should stay RR as a master plan, not R1 or whatever, but...
And you, you brought up the glacier period before, so you are very much aware of the, the ridge road.
Oh yeah, that's Lake Whittlesey.
Yep.
And that's, from Lake Whittlesey to right to this property, which is the edge of the Glacier Lake Plain. If anybody looks at elevations, 800 feet is how, how high Maumee One 14,000 years ago got.
Well, thank you for your...
But beyond that, very hilly, and it does not need houses one per acre.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, again. Yes, sir, come on up. And then I think that's probably all we have time for. Yes.
Name is Todd Richards. I live at 7952 Thornwood Street. I've agreed with, with everything everyone has said here. The one thing, and the Commissioner Weber pointed it out earlier, the master plan is a global look at the county. You're not looking at, when you do those, per acre. Now we're requesting you to look at the individual acre, and the uniqueness of that acre in that decision. Also, I ask the Commission to hold off making a decision on this. We're about to do the master plan this spring. You've heard of all the concerns and issues. Why do we need to decide this right now? Hold off until the master plan is re-reviewed, let these issues be raised, and maybe we change the master plan.
I expect you to be part of that.[1273.08][1273.08](APPLAUSE). All right. So, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
Let's all talk at once.
All right, so we got a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioners Uber, and support by Commissioner Weber. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're gonna start, I'll start down on this end. Commissioner Watkins, what, what's your thought process on this?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. You know, I, it's, it's clear I'm new to this body. This is my third meeting with the Planning Commission, and I understand the seat that the, that both the developer sits in, as well the developer's consultant, Mike, and the citizens. I'm not new to this. I've been a development consultant, both on the municipal side, as well as privately in Michigan and Indiana. And this is tough, right? There's a process that you have to go through. The site selectors have done their job, and, and you're here to do your job, and, and we get that. I do. And I understand the process here is for us to be able to look at the, the zoning piece. And the movement from RR to R1 is, right now, the way it looks, that, that's not substantive as it relates to the development. It's clear that there are folks in this room who understand that it means, it could mean, and more than likely means, you know, there'll be a development plan that comes from the developer, and they'll present that, and we'll get a couple more bites at the apple at least, or, or four more, or five more. One of the things that's important is, I'm gonna say a word that, that developers don't like to hear, and that is smart growth. And smart growth means being able to look at what we're doing, and being able to preserve a lot of what this public has talked about tonight. And that is, how do we preserve a lot of our rural character, but allow for cities and urban areas, townships, whatever you want to call it, to be able to be places where people want to work, live, and play? Nothing new to the folks in this room. This is what you all have been doing on this board, Mr. Knowles, as a consultant, this is what you do every day. Here's what I will say. I think the zoning itself is something that we probably, that I would certainly stand for, but I will say this to the developer's consultant, any concept plan that comes to this body probably should be ready for prime time. There are folks in this room who really feel that this is something that adds to the character of Canton. I will say that I want to stick to the zoning issue, and that's an issue that I think that is clear to us, meets the standard by way of the, the recommendation from, from staff. But the last thing I'll say about it is, when the developer, or developers or their consultant, comes back for these other bites at the apple, they should be ready to present something that's gonna be acceptable to the people in this room, acceptable to the people at this body, as well as acceptable to the community of Canton. So, that's nothing you haven't heard before, and it's something I would take back to the developer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners Uber?
Thank you. I, I have to agree with Commissioner Watkins in, in many ways. I, you know, as an, as an architect, I see both sides of this, too. I, I own property, I don't want things to change around me, but I also realize that property owners have rights for what they can do with their property. As a, it, it's hard to be on the Plan Commission, because we have to make sometimes unpopular decisions, and I, we haven't made a decision yet, so I don't know what we're gonna decide as a group. But we, we make decisions based on the, the zoning and the master plan of the township. And as much as I love trees and, and wildlife, I also recognize that we, we don't, the deer don't vote, unfortunately. The, you know, we do have to respect the, the rights of property owners, but, I don't know.
Mr. Weber?
Well, much like Commissioner Watkins, I've been on both sides of this. I've, I've been in this business a long time myself, and Commissioners Uber is right, we have to make tough decisions. I've lived in Canton 20 years now, I've grown up in this area, grew up in Garden State, so I've been around this area my whole life, so I know what, what was here and what wasn't here for most of the, most of my time on this earth. I have to disagree that I think that this proposed zoning change complies with all the, the zoning standards, at least in my opinion. One of the 10 conditions that has to be met is that conditions have changed since the zoning ordinance was adopted. And the, and the condition that is noted as, as change is that the property owner desires to subject their, sell their property for purposes of development. Well, that's a self-imposed change. That's not a change, in my mind, that's not a change of the environment, or a change of the, of the, the conditions around, immediately around this property. There's still a, there's still a creek that runs through this property, there's still, still heavily wooded, so nothing has changed in that regard. The other thing that, that I, I don't think where this proposal meets the appropriate standard is that, that this amendment corrects an inequitable situation created by the zoning ordinance. I don't think this is an inequitable situation at all. This, this property has been this way for many years, the development around this area has been this way for many years, and I don't think that anything new, there's, other than the massive subdivisions that have been built to the east of this property, has really changed or created an inequitable situation for this property. Those are the two key things that I, that I think. In general, in Canton, and we've had these conversations amongst this, this panel in recent months, one of the things that's concerning is preservation of open space in this township. Let's face it, a lot of the open space in this township has been developed quite heavily, and there's been talk, and in, in connection with that, there's talk about flood control and all that sort of thing. I think it's our, our Township Clerk, Michael Seaggrass, pointed out at one of our meetings, that a lot of what, what we do here in Canton affects those people downriver, like in Dearborn Heights, and all that sort of thing. I would hate for us to do anything that exacerbates that problem. I'm not saying that this necessarily would, but in my mind, I don't, I don't see the advantage to rezoning this property to R1 from RR. Again, I'd, I'd like to see the open space preserved as much as possible, there's, there's not that much of it left in this township. Those are my thoughts on this, on this situation right now. Again, I'm not sure exactly how I'm going.[1736.15][1736.15](APPLAUSE). Those are my comments at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Foster?
Thank you. This is a difficult one for me. I agree with a lot of what Commissioner Weber said, but I also agree with a lot of what Commissioner Watkins said. I think about a lot of the comments that were presented to this board today around flooding, and losing trees, and increased traffic, and preserving wildlife and plant life, and those are things that I care deeply about. When, you know, the tree ordinance was challenged, our board, you know, fought against it, and we went all the way to, you know, the Circuit, the Federal Circuit Court to fight against losing our tree ordinance, because we know how much preserving trees means to this community. It means to, you know, present, preventing flooding, and, you know, people moved into Canton because of parks, and because of schools, and because of, you know, the ability to, you know, to... the ability to, you know, to live in a community that was partially suburban but partially rural and wanting to maintain that character of Canton. But a lot of this is, you know, comes up when we have a development proposal. And we don't have a development proposal yet. And so those are the things that I'm struggling right now. So I'm still formulating my thoughts.
Mr. Ocharia?
When I look at the, one, look at the property and if you think the property has got a soul and a spirit, it clearly is an RR property. It doesn't feel like an R1 property because of the woods and the creek and just the kind of disturbance and the ecological damage that would be created, and a lot of unknowns. So I do not think it's appropriate to change and would like to retain the RR if possible. I agree with most of the comments, and they seem very logical. Thank you.
For me, for me, this is a no-brainer. It's not as big a decision as you might think. As we talked about before, the master plan is a guide. We don't have to go with that change if we don't want to or if we don't feel that it's necessary for the township. You know, these are decisions that are made forthright by this board. And I've been with a lot of different commissioners, and I never believe that any of them do this without the love of Canton and wanting to make Canton better. However, yes, we do have to look at property owners and their rights, and we have to look at, you know, the future, et cetera, et cetera. For me, you all played an important role tonight. Why? Because I don't live there. I live in the southwest quadrant. So my view of your area is strictly from drawings and from the package that we get and from driving through. You've presented a picture tonight that I was very much unaware of in terms of the environment, in terms of the atmosphere, in terms of what your, the density and the whole thing in Canton is all about. As I said before, the northwest quadrant was kept low on purpose, and we thought R1 was the key to that. But maybe less density would be better there. And what we have right now is really, looks like a good, good mix. However, I will say this. Respecting property owners' rights, and I'm assuming here that none of the people in here are the owners of the property in question. We have to, we have to play fair in the sense that even though good planning dictates a look to the future, you have to be willing to say, okay, if they build houses, let's say they build houses one per two acres, one per three acres, et cetera, et cetera. Which is our power to do, basically, with the PDD, I mean. But it doesn't guarantee that that's going to happen that way. And, you know, myself, I'd rather see the zoning stay right where it is. Anyone else on the panel have a comment? I mean, some of you were kinda... Do I hear any kind of a motion?
Chair motion to close discussion.
Well, we've never done that, but that's, usually the motion closes the discussion after we've made it, but...
And just for clarification, the motion is a recommendation to the Township Board. The Township Board has the final action on any zoning change.
This is true.
Whether it's a recommendation to approve or a recommendation to deny, the Township Board does take final action on this application. So the Planning Commission is just a recommending body.
Right. Do I hear a motion either way?
I move to recommend denial of the request to rezon parcel number 026990003000 from RR Rural Residential to R1 Single Family Residential as proposed at the Planning Commission tonight.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Ocharia. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote on this motion?
Certainly, Commissioner Ocharia?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes. The motion has been denied. Thank you all for your participation in this process. Thank you, okay. We'll let the room clear.
We still have a lot of business to conduct tonight, folks, so thank you for leaving quietly.
They did.
Excuse us, there's still a meeting going on.
Yep, yep, please.
Please, please go outside.
We have the rest of our night to do. Have a good night. Our second agenda item of the evening is the Desai Court. Let me pull this up here, okay. Okay, it's the Desai Court. It's a private road where we're considering a site plan. Proposed use on this is a private road as properties located west side of Denton Road between Geddes and Michigan Avenue. Patrick, could you give us more detail?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant proposes to create a private road, which is proposed to be called Desai Court, located on the west side of Denton Road between Geddes and Mott. The applicant proposes to split the subject property into three parcels for the purpose of constructing single-family homes. The new private road, Desai Court, is proposed to serve access for all three parcels. The road is proposed to be gravel. These ordinance, the zoning ordinance states that a gravel road can be a private road as long as it doesn't serve more than three parcels. So the applicants are proposing the road to remain as gravel, and the number of splits off of the subject parcel would be a maximum of three, three resulting parcels. Should the road be approved and they want more units than three, they would have to pave that road to do that. So the applicants are aware of that requirement, and they've, they're proceeding with a gravel road with three proposed parcels. The property is owned R2, and a single-family residential is permitted in that. So the splits would come at a later time if the road is approved. The Engineering Services Division and the Fire Department have both reviewed the plan, and they've recommended approval with some conditions. The Fire Department still needs a little bit more information, just a note stating that the hydrant can't be located more than 20 feet from the road. And our engineers have also reviewed it on a preliminary basis. So our recommendation is to approve the private road on the subject parcel, subject to final approval by the Fire Department, and that taking place prior to Township Board review of the private road application. So this one will be a recommendation to the Township Board for final action. And that concludes our comments.
All right, thank you, Patrick. Is the project representative here? Come on up.
Hello, Evan Priest, Michael Priest and Associates. I'm here representing my client, Mr. Skelton, who's also here. I think they thanked Patrick for his presentation, and I think he's covered it.
Okay.
If you have any questions, if you have any.
All right, thank you. We'll start down at this end, Commissioner Ocharia?
No questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Foster?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Weber?
Um, no questions, I guess.
Commissioner Zubor?
No questions.
And Commissioner Watkins?
Sorry, I'm gonna break the chain here. I just, if you, if you could just walk me quickly through the cut at the proposed site. I do see the plan, but I wanted you, if you could take just 60 seconds to walk me through it.
Brief overview of what we want to do?
Yes, the actual, yes, the actual, the actual road, the private road piece of the parcel.
Well, the applicant's goal is really just to split the parcel into three. The township's ordinances, as we now understand them, require that we get a road site plan approved prior to the township being able to actually approve the split. So, yeah, that's how we ended up with this. And we, we've aligned the road with the road across the street and kept the road as short as we possibly could because frankly, we think the remaining west portion of the property is really very nice, nice woods and valuable. And I think the ultimate buyer is going to come in with a large home on the large piece and preserve quite a bit of it. So we're really trying to minimize how far we go in with the road. But frankly, we probably wouldn't have come in with the site plan if it wasn't a requirement of the split ordinance at this time.
Thank you. The, the split, the intention here is, three properties, you said?
Yes.
So basically, it's a three-property subdivision. Is it going to be listed like a subdivision would with Wayne County? You know, with bylaws and dues and, you know, all of those kinds of things?
We drafted a private road agreement, which would provide for the maintenance of the private road as well as any private culverts or storm sewers. And each owner, owner of each parcel would be a party to that agreement and responsible for the maintenance of it.
Who would actually own the road?
I think that establishes an association, basically.
Okay, so there will be an association, and it would be common property?
Either an association or, well, actually, the land the road is on will be owned by each of...
Each, so...
Parcel owner, subject to an easement with the private road. And then they would be a...
Because I noticed in the drafts here, in terms of the maintenance agreements, there's no mention of ownership or liability or anything of that nature. Was there a reason for that? You know, it seems to me that that would be a big deal to have on your paperwork for that. I mean, it spells out in terms of responsibility of maintenance and those kinds of things. But if I, if I slip and fall on that road, who am I suing? Who am I calling Sam on?
Part of the road did you slip on?
It is worth noting that there is an indemnification clause in the road agreement itself that indemnifies the township and holds the township harmless.
Yeah, it holds the township harmless, however...
Right, so there's, the township itself is protected in terms of that.
Okay, so...
I agree, it's a good idea to add an insurance clause in there, though.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, if you look in the agreement where it talks about the road manager, it's pretty clear that this is an agreement between these three property owners. By their agreement, by signing this, they're appointing a quote-unquote manager. So if there's a slip and fall or there's a legal action, it would be against all three of those property owners.
Okay, all right. And then the other thing is, getting back to the trees, you've got it spelled out here that I believe 37 trees are slated to be removed. Why those particular 37? Is it just because they're not a great species? Or is it the position that they're in? I mean, just, you don't have to go over every one of them. I'm just saying in general. I thought that was interesting. Because some of them are not to be removed, and some are to be removed.
The number is 18 that we're removing, actually.
Well, I see a list here that says trees to be removed, and I counted them, unless I counted wrong, it was 37 of them. But I could be wrong.
I think that's right. That must be a mistake by whomever prepared this plan, which would be me, sorry. If you count the trees, if you look to the left of that in the plan view and count up those trees, I don't know that there are 37 of them there. I think it's...
Okay, no, I was just going by those numbers that they're listed there because they're identified by numbers, but that's...
You're right. I do believe, though, when we make application for a tree removal permit, which I don't know if anybody will until such time as they propose a home, then they'll have to propose a mitigation, and we'll have to make sure that's all straight.
Okay. All right, other than that, I see no problems with this. Anybody else have any, any other opinions on it? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend site plan approval of the private road on parcel number 121-99-0005-000, subject to final approval by the Fire Department prior to Township Board review of the private road application.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Ocharia. Do I hear any further discussion? Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sure, Commissioner Ocharia?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes.
Okay, and then this recommendation goes to the trustees, correct, Patrick?
That's correct.
All right, our next agenda item is the Michigan Fireworks Company, Company 2 LLC, where we're considering a seasonal sales permit. The proposed use is a seasonal retail fireworks sale. Property is located north of Ford and east of Canton Center Road, I believe by, is that by O'Reilly? Yeah, by O'Reilly, okay. Patrick, could you give us more detail?
Sure. This is one that has taken place the last few years in the parking lot of, next to O'Reilly, at the Canton Landing Shopping Center. And there are no changes from the previous years. There may be some subtle changes, but overall, the tent and the facilities are located in the same location. And because it's a seasonal sales and fireworks sales, they come to the Planning Commission every year for their approval before they can set up. So our recommendation is approval based on no changes from the previous years and no ordinance enforcement or public safety enforcement that we're aware of. So no objections from any of the Township divisions. So our recommendation is approval.
And I believe we have our project representative here. Would you like to add anything, or no?
No, I mean, we're not making any changes. We live in Salem Township. We like to keep it...
If you want to speak to the microphone, everyone can hear you at home, then. Sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Zubor.
Yeah, I'm Jessica Knopka. I'm the owner of Michigan Fireworks. My husband and I live in Salem Township, a nearby community. We've been doing this through, since 2014. We're not making any changes. We come for the two weeks, and we leave it in better condition than we found it, so...
Yep, not heard any problems with your functioning there ever at all, other than my dogs who don't like fireworks, period, so...
We have quiet ones.
No one buys them.
All right, from the commissioner. Commissioner Ocharia, any objections, comments?
No objections.
Commissioner Foster? Commissioner Weber? Commissioner Zubor?
Nope.
Commissioner Watkins?
No.
None from me either, so good luck to you, all right?
Thank you.
We get a vote.
Oh, that's right.
Sir, Commissioner...
I already gave it to you.
Chairman Green, I move to approve a one 30-day seasonal sales permit for the Michigan Fireworks Company 2 LLC on parcel number 039990025001, commencing on June 15, 2022, subject to obtaining appropriate permits from the Building Services Division for erection of the tent and compliance with all sign regulations.
Support? All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Weber. Any further discussion? Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sure, Commissioner Ocharia?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes. Good luck to you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, our next agenda item is the Quick Pass Car Wash, where we're considering a site plan amendment for a property which is located the north side of Michigan Avenue between Canton Center Road and old Canton Center Road. There's proposed changes to the architectural design of the building. Patrick, could you give us more, please?
Sure, thank you. In 2021, the Quick Pass Car Wash received special land use approval and a site plan approval to build the automobile wash establishment on the subject site just north of the 711, north of Michigan Avenue, and east of Canton Center Road and west of old Canton Center Road. So it's that vacant triangular piece that's just east of Kroger. And the applicants have proposed some architectural changes to the building. And some of the changes include still having the building as... And some of the changes include still having the building as predominantly brick, but including some split face block as well. But it excludes the column accents and the cornice. And the overall style of the building is much different than the building that was approved. The windows on the proposed building before you this evening are taller and narrower. The proposed building designs have a heavier use of the fiber cement siding in lieu of the cornice. And it includes a higher part of the building in the northwest corner that includes painted metal ribs and signage. In general, we prefer the approved building elevations that were approved at site plan review in 2021. We prefer those to the proposed elevations because the previously approved elevations included the column accents, the cornice, the predominant use of masonry, and the appropriate window sizes and placements for a commercial building. The approved columns on the approved version of the plans last year created a visual break in the long walls as well. And those windows on the approved version of the plan were more regular sized, while the proposed plans are narrower and elongated that look a little bit more industrial. At the same time, though, the brick still meets the minimum requirement of 50% according to the zoning ordinance. It's just that the style is much different. In some cases, staff can review architectural changes and make administrative modifications. But in this case, where the modifications are more significant and we have a building that has not yet been constructed, it's appropriate to have the planning commission review the architectural changes and provide a decision on that. Our recommendation as staff is to defer action on the proposed changes pending receipt of revised plans that address the concerns noted in our review letter. And this evening, we've written two motions, one of which would be to defer action according to staff's recommendation. There's another option of a motion to approve if the planning commission so decides. That concludes our comments, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is the project sponsor here today? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Marsha Hornig with Jeffrey Scott Architects. We were asked by Quick Pass Car Wash to develop a new prototype, a new image for them, give them some brand identity. They wanted to do that through the design of their building. So, they asked us to come together. So, our 15-person office got together with them, had what's called a design charrette. We had a couple of meetings where everybody worked together, trying to come up with a new brand identity for them. Which resulted in, their main objectives were to have a modern, clean design that could be identifiable as they build multiple units across the metro area. So, that's what we set out to do. And we worked with them quite a bit, a couple of months. And we would have been, the old, the old design was, we had started this after that was already approved. And Wayne County's taken a little bit long to approve the engineering portion. So, we were approached by the owners to try to develop it for this site because we were excited about the design and wanted to bring this into Canton, into that main, you know, into that great triangular property. So, this is what we've come up with. I'll have Kevin from my office go through some of the other designs. And then also, we've got, Patrick brought up the lights that he wanted to see, staff recommendation was to see not so much of a, originally, we had like more of a glowing light, similar to what you see on the walls here where you would kind of see just a glow. We agree with Patrick and we want to do something more of an up-down light so we can highlight some of that building and let it be, let it glow a little bit, but not have that, you can't really sense a source of the light. So, we do agree with that portion. And I do have cut sheets if you'd like to see something that we, you know, something that we will move to. And I'll let Kevin describe some of the materials that we've gone to with this new design.
My name is Kevin Rosenberg. I was the architect who was working on synthesizing all the ideas that came out of our 15-person charrette. We started with a lot of images from contemporary car wash designs, things that are kind of on the cutting edge of what these new buildings are looking at, looking like. So, what we came up with is a series of volumes that kind of accentuates the long shape of what a car wash is because you have the tunnel. So, we wanted to accentuate both the entrance and the process that goes through the car wash, using the large windows to break up that expansive building and allow the customers to see inside, both when they're coming along the inside and coming along the outside. We used the fiber cement to create these forms, bringing in the colors of the Quick Pass logo, having the tower in the front that creates a presence on the street. And then using the white brick that really complements the colors that we brought in from the logo and fits with Canton's desire for 50% brick in their building. So, yeah, I'm going to pass it off to Scott, who's going to talk more about the property.
This wasn't our first proposed design. We had larger pieces of a block and it just, it looks more contemporary. But to comply with Canton's code, we changed it to brick after our first submission. So, the review letter that you received from planning states that tonight is just about the building, but then there are comments on it about the sidewalk and landscaping. And Patrick just got the landscaping plan, I think, today. So, we're not, we don't need to get into that, but we are very prepared to discuss the sidewalk if we could do that. But I, first, I want to talk about the property because I know some of you are new, but you probably all know the property. That's Michigan Avenue, New Canton Center Road and Old Canton Center Road. It's a very unusual property, unlike any other in Canton Township, so it's been extremely difficult to develop. We originally had a plan to do a Walgreens with a 30,000-square-foot center there. The problem is that because all three roads are considered frontages, we had to do front yard setbacks for all three roads, front yard landscaping for all three roads, front yard signage. And so, it was impossible to do that with the rear of a strip center. So, it's taken us a long time to figure out what we could do there. And what we've come up with is six individual freestanding retail outlets. We appreciate in the past that the planning commission has recognized that it's a very difficult site. It's also a very prominent site. It's, we've got a "Welcome to Canton" sign on the property and the, it's considered that intersection is the southern gateway to Canton Township. So, it's an important piece. We'd like to finally get it fully developed and we appreciate your continued cooperation. So, regarding the architectural changes, I talked with Patrick about this several weeks ago and I was kind of joking and I said, "I understand that you don't like, quote, 'modern-looking' buildings and that you like columns and sconces and that you like, quote, 'regular-sized windows,' unquote." But what I explained to him is, everybody has different taste. Some of you probably like blue, some green, some red or another color. Some of you like French country, some traditional, some colonial. And everybody has different tastes. So, I joked with him. I said, "If you like cornices and columns and regular-sized windows, why don't you go and get a property and spend $5 million and build what you want? But this is our brand. This is what we want to do." So, you have codes and zoning ordinance to create a box within which developers and business people have to work within. If we want to work outside the box, we have to come and ask your permission. What we're asking for tonight is inside the box. What we feel like is happening is now we're being given a new, smaller box just for us in which we have to do columns and cornices and a certain kind of window. You can drive all the way down Ford Road and I don't think you'll see the predominant of buildings with columns and cornices. And I don't even honestly know what a regular-sized window is. So, I don't know how to, I mean, the kind that are on a Kia, the kind that are on an auto dealership. I mean, I don't know what it is. But the point is, we're operating within the box. I appreciate that everybody has different tastes. This is the brand that we want to run. It would be like saying to a chain, which I won't say we're like McDonald's or anybody else, but it's like saying, "We don't like your colors that you're using," or "We don't like the kind of building." That's what the brand is. That's what chains try to do. So, all we're saying is, we meet the code. We changed our plans already to meet the brick predominance, which is very difficult because at each end, we have these huge doors and that takes up a big amount of space and that you can't obviously do in brick. So, that's what we've got, that's all we've got on the elevation changes. Happy to answer your questions.
Okay. Commissioner Watkins?
Thanks so much, Mr. Chairman. So, if you could, just, could you, and I appreciate you coming to the commission to discuss your brand. I'd like to get a little bit of information and through the chair, maybe to Patrick. If you could briefly describe exactly what we're looking at as relates to a revision of what we see right now, meaning the developers pointed out, you know, it looks like they've got ceiling-to-floor windows. I just wanted to be sure that what has been recommended by staff falls into something that can be reasonably performed by the developer.
Well, we've reviewed some of the concepts before the application and noted some of the, some of the concerns that we had versus the original building that was approved. The original building that was approved was favorably received both by the planning commission and the board, based on the architecture and its scale. And with some of the changes there, like with the windows, for example, the previous windows, they were wider than they were tall. So, there was a lot more window coverage, if you will, linearly going across the building where with the higher, narrower windows, there's that appearance of less window coverage. Some of it is with the materials. Many of the buildings in the township, they have cornices, they have a certain look to them, a finished appearance. And replacing the previously approved cornice with the fiber cement paneling, that's a considerable change that had the planning commission have these changes when it originally approved the plans, it may have approved something different or it may have modified them based on some of the buildings that we typically see here in this room, especially with commercial buildings.
Got it. I understand. Thank you so much. I'll sit, Mr. Chair.
Zubor? Resident Architect?
I get that you think we're moving the goalposts, but you submitted this particular plan and elevations to us and we approved those. So, now you're coming back and changing and saying that we don't like the brand. As an architect, I like the previous version much better personally. But obviously, we want to try to work with you, but boy, there's a big difference between the older version and the new version. And just so you know, I would much rather, I'm, I do mostly residential work, I would much rather work on a mid-century modern home than a Cape Cod or a Victorian house. That's just my personal preference. But I don't, I honestly can't find a whole lot I like about the new drawings. To me, when I first saw these, my first thought was, it reminds me of Howard Johnson's. I don't, is the painted part, that's the fiber cement?
Yes.
The colored parts? I just, I feel like it looks a whole lot cheaper to me than-
If I can speak to that first.
Sure.
So, originally, when we came up with the design, a lot of these elements were metal panel. They were much more modern, you know, modern materials. You know, this whole area here, this fiber cement area was metal panel. And I believe Kevin, am I right? A lot of these, yeah. And then where the brick was, was metal panel. And so, we're trying to still keep within the brand, but keep it within your ordinance as well.
The brick requirement?
Yeah, with the brick requirement. And, you know, with the windows, the, actually, the original and the first one that we sent over to the planning department had more windows on it. So, we got that rhythm on the elevation and we're using those windows, those long, you know, kind of thin windows as columns. You know, I mean, we're kind of, we're breaking up the facade in that, in that way. And, you know, we took the approach that it's, you know, it's kind of more like a mid-century type thing. It's more, it harkens back to a retro feel, but with modern, modern materials on our original design. So, now we're trying to basically, you know, get it into, into the Canton ordinance. And the-
Well, we do meet the Canton-
Yeah, we do meet the, we do meet the ordinance with the 50% brick.
Isn't it 50% masonry? Patrick, I'm sorry. The ordinance is 50% masonry, right? Or is it brick? Yeah, we've applied the masonry to allow for stone and things like that. So, it doesn't necessarily have to be clay brick. Some of the concrete products, like the smooth face, half-high, some of those have the brick look. So, those types of masonry. Split face block, I think that's in a different classification. You know, we look for the brick stone.
I'd much rather see the other building, honestly.
Just curious, would you approve a Victorian home if it came before you? Even though you don't like it?
I didn't like it.
No, I see you like the other more, the one that you say you like.
I'd rather work on more modern buildings.
Totally get it. And that's what I said. Everybody has different tastes, but we're trying to work within the box and we are. And so, then for people to say, "I like this color or that style or whatever," we meet the code. That's what I'm having a hard time understanding.
Well, the, I mean, the planning commission exists to help, to help make the development in Canton-
Successful.
Yeah, successful, to help it, you know, have some, we don't want everything to look the same. I would never say that. But we do want things to look nice. And yeah, you're right, it's subjective, but I am an architect. I, you know, I mean, I have a lot of training, just like your architects do, so.
Yet 15 architects come up with this. 15.
Much better than just one, then.
No, I'm just saying.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Commissioner Weber?
So, I will say, I, one of the things that I do get a little, I don't know about tired of in Canton is, I don't, I get tired of looking at brown brick all the time and that sort of thing. I definitely think there's room for differences and as you indicated, everyone has differences of opinion. That being said, when you came into the township, you know what the standards are in Canton. I don't think we're moving the goalposts at all. If you look in most of our commercial areas in Canton, they do have this more traditional look. You pointed out yourself, this property is kind of the southern gateway to Canton. To have that building on this property, I want to see it developed, but it doesn't go, it doesn't go along with the bank that's there. And the bank, while it doesn't have columns and cornices, it does, it is all brick and it's kind of got that, I don't know, it's sort of a pseudo Prairie-style building that looks a little more traditional. That looks very contemporary, very industrial, I think. So, I, well, I'm open to the ideas about moving away from the previous design that was approved and that we didn't tell you to bring in, but I can't get behind that one.
Commissioner Foster?
Yeah, the proposed elevations are substantially different from what was approved by this body and by the township board last year. So, when did the branding change?
We, while, after we got approval, we'd been working on it already, but we didn't think we'd have it in time. So, we spent months on it and then after it came up, Wayne County took forever and we realized we weren't going to be able to start construction last year. So, we said, "As long as we're going to have to start construction in the spring, we might as well take this time to work the brand in now." We had it done at that point. So, we said, "Let's go back and start now with Canton." That's our next- That's our next, chronologically, that's our next site. So, that's why we came back.
I've got one follow-up, I'm sorry. You're building another car wash in Livonia slash Plymouth right now.
We have one in North Canton, we got one in Livonia, and we're doing one in Plymouth. They'll be open in sixty days.
You're doing the one on the Abbey Road, correct?
Right, right.
It's gonna look like this?
No, because that was well before this plan. All the future ones will look like this.
Do you mind if I step in?
Yeah.
I'm one of the original Quick Pass guys. I started down on Canton Center.
What's your name?
I'm Jamie Burke, Quick Pass Car Wash. And, so, I'm involved into the day-to-day business, plus, I'm seeing what's happening around the country. Okay, there's this huge craze with car washes right now, right? And it started out west, and it's sweeping this way. Every building you see that goes up does not look like one of our car washes here. They are all super modern, and, and they're super identifiable, like Tommy's wash. You know what, when you see a Tommy's wash, you know exactly who it is, right?
Spaceship.
And, and so that's what's happening right now, and it's coming to Michigan, okay? And we're, we want to build a brand, but we want to compete. We don't want, they're all private equity groups. The guy up here wants to come in here, someone wants to come in on Ford, those are all private equity guys, hedge fund guys out of Wall Street and Beverly Hills, right? So they have these cookie cutters, and they stamp them out. But what they're really good at is building the brand. So that's who we're going to be competing against. Now, my customer service, the way we put out a car, I'm not worried about it, right? But what I am worried about is, when I went from Canton to Plymouth to build, Laura Hall had a different taste than what we, she made us change it, right? And then, when I was in Livonia, we were doing a remodel, and we're going to reface the whole building, and they put a kibosh on it, and I said, no, no, we don't like that, we don't. So, every time we go somewhere different, they have different views on what it should look like. The problem is, we're never going to be able to build a brand that way. And these private equity guys that are coming in, they're going to go down on Ford Road, that's what they're going to do, right? And that's what they're doing actually right now. And, we're just trying to get ahead of the curve, right? Whether, you know, we all agree this looks better than the other or not, but they all look like this. If you go online right now, there's not a car wash out of state that looks like our car washes. They are super modern, they have a tower...
Spaceships.
And, and, not saying that I like it better, but if I'm going to be competing with them, we're spending five million dollars a location, right? And we lose winner from building. Where my friends out of state, they get to build year-round in Florida, Vegas, right? These private equity guys, they're writing a check for twenty million, they're doing four sites at once. They got three hundred million behind them. They already called me, tried to buy me out multiple times. So I'm trying to get ahead of the curve. Again, whether we, I like this, or you like it, or what, not, at a certain point, we got to stay in our ground, and I don't want the private equity guys just coming to here writing checks and building four locations around me, and all of a sudden, they have a brand. And every time you go, if you go from Plymouth to here, or you go to Brighton, or Howell, or wherever we build them, Novi, they all look different. They're not, if you're driving down the road, you're not going to say, oh, there's a Quick Pass. You're going to see a Tommy's wash, you're going to see twenty of them in the next two years. And they're all the exact same buildings. There's one down river just got built, they're building one on Ford Road, Newburgh, and Westland.
But we don't just approve those without question either.
I'm not, I'm not saying that, but what I'm saying is, majority cities they're going to are, and I just want to compete on that level, where, hey, there's a Starbucks, there's a Quick Pass, you know what I mean?
I go to your, I go to your Quick Pass on Canton Center Road.
Yeah.
I don't go there because of what the building looks like. I see the sign out on the road. That's how I know it's you.
I get it, but at a certain point, you know McDonald's out of the corner of your eye, you know, you're...
Because I know the sign. Mc, not every McDonald's looks, looks the same. In, in general, it does.
Right.
But there are, there are communities that require McDonald's to put all brick on their building, or to have a certain color scheme, or, at the end of the day, they still have the same signage, though. And that's how I know it's McDonald's.
Here from Commissioner Taria.
So, so my question is, the one that you, the last, last build, was it very different from this one?
Yeah, Plymouth?
Yeah, they wanted more of a traditional-type look.
It was before we even designed this.
So, from a logical standpoint, I would rather build something which is very similar to that, because there's already brand recognition. People who come to Plymouth know it looks a certain type.
They're all different so far, and we plan to do a lot more. So we, we, we now have a brand image, we want to start replicating that.
I guess we have an opportunity, you know, since Wayne County dragged their feet, it was like, okay, well, if we're going to start a new brand, look, we might as well do it now, not a year from now, in a different city. But, you know, that's just my, like I said, I'm not an architect either.
We appreciate that. I mean, we, we want you to have brand recognition. But there are certain parameters, and, and again, we haven't moved the goalposts. The, the, the ordinance is what it's been right along. But there are certain parameters that we still have to operate in, given where you're at, and given the, the way our community is set up, and that's right, just like Plymouth, just like Livonia. Yes, there are going to be some communities that are just going to rubber stamp you coming in with that building. We're not one of those communities.
What's, what I, what I'm trying to say is, we have followed all, we're within the box. We followed all the rules, we're over fifty percent brick, we meet everything. What, what is it that's not according to code? Is it the blue?
It's not about code.
It's not about code.
I'm sorry?
It's not about code. It's about, it's about Canton, and it's about taste, it's about what's already been approved. I, I'd like to ask this question. When the project came to us before, and we approved this design that's on, on the books right now, I noticed you did not have a sign other than car wash on there. Was, was this that you have here, this was already in the works, but we got, we got a different design thrown at us? Was that, was that the case?
For the sign itself?
No, I mean, the, the design, the, the original design that we approved. Was that, was, was that knowing that this was coming?
No. Honestly, we copied the plans from North Canton and, and did it here. That's, that's all we did. And this was going on in the background, we just didn't think we'd have time.
Yeah, we did.
But when Wayne County delayed us, and this process happened over several months, we said, you know what, we're not going to be able to build this year, we've got a six-month window of opportunity here, let's go with our new plan.
Well, because the reason I ask is because, and keep in mind, I, I don't think I've ever gone to a car wash because of the way the building looked. It's usually location and price. Quite honestly, I'm just going to be honest with you. However, I do notice that there is no logo, there is no signage on the original design, and it just makes me wonder if you, you, if you did know that it was coming, you didn't want us to fall too much in love with this, because that, that was coming.
No, 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 no. We, we have a separate sign for that plan. We just haven't gone to...
If I had to put these two side by side to make a decision, which were, when I was going to go to based upon how it looked, it would be the original design. It would, hands down. I like the original design much better than that design. That design could be car repair place, as far as I'm concerned, it's got the tower, and it's got the logo, and so on and so forth. That doesn't thrill me at all. This at least gives me, what we originally designed with, with, with the column look, the lights, the rounded tower, it gives me a little bit of distinction. That does not give me distinction. That gives me same old, same old. I could find that anywhere, and that's what you're trying to do. I, you're trying to do same old, same old. And that's really not Canton.
I disagree, because, I, I disagree, because I, I think that the, the design that we had before looks like every other building that you see, with the brown brick, and, you know, I, it doesn't, it didn't excite me to do it.
Ninety percent of the new car washes in the country have the tower.
So, we're trying to get something identifiable for, for, you know, this, so this is, instead of this being a arched, you know, opening, this is something that can, is a focal point, that we can identify and put the, have the sign so you can see it.
I don't know, I guess that's a personal, personal choice, but I'd rather see the, the arched look better than just a square tower. I'm less contemporary in, in that aspect.
Well, the building has no articulation. I mean, it's just, it's, it just, it's a box, so with the, another box attached to it, and another tower box.
So with more articulation along here?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, was that where, like...
You're leaning, you're leaning more towards, you know, I mean, if articulated, the style's more.
I mean, that's what I'm saying I liked about the other proposal, is there's a lot more articulation on it, there's, it just looks a lot more, there's a lot more to look at.
I think, one, maybe this isn't the best view, because one of the features about this that we liked so much was how it articulates out. It's got L's all over it, and it, and the, the original design had a piece like this, and a piece like this, and, and that kind of flows throughout the, the plan, and that, that's what we thought was so cool about it, was, articulating is exactly the word I would use, actually. It's, it's, that doesn't really, oh, yeah, here.
Okay, so what, what is your, your high point about that, that elevation?
That, that, well, articulating was the word, and, and, and when, when you said it, I, I thought, yeah, that's exactly what we were going for. I mean, wouldn't, wouldn't you agree? I mean, comparing, putting all the plans that we looked at together, and all the drawings?
Yeah, having the colored fiber cement parts, the parts that are forming the L's around this, that's what's articulating the shape of the building. And also, we had more windows in there, I guess, to break up the facade, but we had to take those out to meet the 50% brick. So, again, this isn't the ideal one that we came up with, because we're trying to meet the parameters that the...
What's, what's the chief, what's the chief go-getter in terms of your branding, and, and visual branding? What, what, is it, is it your logo, is it, you know, the colors?
Our colors.
Is it the orange colors, or the blue?
The blue and orange.
So why couldn't you incorporate the orange and the blue, and your logo, on that original design? What is it about that contemporary design of building that makes your branding go? What, what is it that you want to do with that that you couldn't do with this other design?
When we started the design process, we started by looking at inspiration, which is, okay, what are the most successful car wash companies, and what are car washes looking like and designed today? And we drew inspiration from all these pieces, and that's what this is kind of the synthesis of, is drawing what's happening today with car washes. So it is the clean lines, it's the volume, it's the materials, not necessarily a brick building, but ornamentation and courses and things like that, that's kind of what had happened in the past, but we're trying, or they're trying to create a brand for what their car washes are looking like, and the rest of the town, and they're going to be building more, at least, if they want something that's contemporary.
So, so going forward, you're basically going to take that building, and you'd go to Belleville, you'd go to Westland, you'd go to Vipsalani, and you'd have that same building, because then they, people would drive down the street, and they'd know, oh, there's, there's a Quick Pass. That's, that's basically what you're saying.
Right, but it would be...
But it'll be the building that causes that.
Bill, and Milford, and nicer communities, but yes.
You're saying that it's the building that causes that?
Right.
It won't be, you know, be other, other factors?
Right.
That draw them to that.
Just like, I mean, we may do a Starbucks and a Burger King there, and they have their branded image. It's not just the sign, it's, it's the look of the building. And same kind of thing. If we had a daycare center there, like a Tudor Time, that, you know, they, they have a look. That's what we're trying to do.
So you talk about Tommy's, and I see there's a Tommy's coming to Westland. But where they're going, there's no other, there's, there's no character in that area where, where they're going there at Newburgh and Ford Road. There's no other buildings that look, and again, I'm not trying to say everything needs to look alike, much like, every car wash doesn't need to look alike. I can see a Tom, the, and I'm just looking at one of Tommy's, I'm, I'm seeing their structure. I can see that going there, that fits there. Again, I think this property is a south, as you put it, is the southern entrance to Canton, and I think there are some guidelines, if you want to call it that, that we now kind of need to keep in mind when we're looking at buildings. I don't think that building fits there. I'm sorry, I don't.
Anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, I just, Mr. Chair, I wanted to close it out. I, I think it's key, I mean, building a brand is, is, is one thing. I think at the end of the day, being in front of planning commissions and development boards, I mean, dictates one thing, and that is, you know, can the people on this, on this board agree that there's a design that works? Sounds like they did that. I wasn't on the board at the time. August of 2021 is when that happened, and I think that was an acceptable design to them. Coming back, this is, it is, it's, and thank you so much, Patrick, for clarifying. It's, it's quite different. I mean, I think no one in here would, would say that it isn't. And if you wanted to create a brand where it's almost like, do you want to grow someplace and everyone's got the same suit on? I, I think there's, there's, that's not what you want to have. I think what we want to have is what was approved late last year, something that's going to incorporate the character of the township, but yet still carry your brand, not to negate your brand in any way, shape, or form. I think Mr. Chairman characterized it correctly. That previous design should carry your brand. I've developed Starbucks inside of university halls, and it's still Starbucks. We've developed McDonald's inside of buildings in, in Tokyo, it's still McDonald's. So I think you have to follow the character of the community that you're in, and you can still carry your brand. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else? We have two, two options to go with this.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion.
All right, you want to go, go do that?
I move to defer action on the site plan amendment, application for architectural changes to the automobile wash establishment for use on parcel number 7112999-0002-710, pending receipt of revised architectural elevations that are more consistent with the previously approved site plans.
Support?
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber, and support by Commissioner Foster. Any further discussion? Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sure. Commissioner Taria?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes, yes. Okay, so, Patrick, so that means that, that they will then work with you on, working on the architecture, architecture. You said that this came before us because it was, it was so broad.
Right.
But now, that the, we have gone ahead and done this motion, they will work with you in terms of modifying what's already approved? So, that's the way I gather.
Yeah, that'll be up to the applicant in terms of what step they want to take next with, in terms of process and any kind of designs. As a separate matter, the applicants had mentioned some sidewalk placement. There are some revisions in play in the design phase with, with the plan as a result of, I think it's a county right-of-way issue, I don't know that for sure, but there may be something back here at the table in the next month or two, dealing with the width of a landscape setback, that we may have to entertain a modification. So it's a little bit early on that, but I anticipate this one will be back at the table within a month or two on that aspect. And at that same time, we may have something different with the architecture, just depending on how the applicant intends to proceed.
But we'll leave it as is, we don't, we don't have time. So we'll, we'll come back as quickly as we can on the landscaping, but we'll leave the design as it was.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you for that.
Thanks.
All right, come visit me at the wash.
All right, we'll do that. All right. Okay, our next agenda on the list is man's lumber. That one, da-da-da-da-da-da, where are we here? Man's lumber. Okay, we're considering a site plan amendment. This property is located south side of Michigan Avenue, between Beck Road and Belleville, and the proposed use is an addition to the existing structure, an expansion of the lumberyard operations. Patrick, could you give us more?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. The lumberyard use was approved on the site back in 2004, so roughly eighteen years ago. And the, the applicants have submitted a site plan for the expansion of the use on the site itself. This one actually started in 2019, which was pre-COVID, so we've, we've gone back and forth with the applicant on a number of different changes, and, and their business model, and, and future use has changed as well. So, it's, it's been, I think, maybe three years in the making, almost, in terms of the revisions. And one of the general things that the applicant is proposing to incorporate is, south of the property is in Van Buren Township. And that property in, in Van Buren Township is owned M1 Light Industrial, and its master plan is heavy industrial. I'm not sure if there's necessarily a rezoning application in Van Buren Township, but the applicant is proposing a trust manufacturing facility on their property adjacent to the south in Van Buren Township. And we've been in communication with the planners in Van Buren Township. We've even had at least one conference call with their planners and the applicants just to discuss the logistics and the proposal and some alternatives. And what's proposed there is that there are two curb cuts proposed on the south side of the site in Canton Township that would directly access the property in Van Buren Township where they're proposing trust manufacturing on the Van Buren side. What that would do is that would encourage more of the traffic for coming in and out of the trust manufacturing facility to go through Mann's Lumber and on to Michigan Avenue directly instead of going west to Beck Road, which is gravel. And that's to, to help save the road there. Not to say that there couldn't be an access to Beck Road, but we're looking at connection between the Mann's site on both Canton side and the Van Buren side. So, that's one element of the site in terms of the cross-connection. It's not the major item on the site plan, but it is, it is significant. The major item is, in addition to the southern building, it's a warehouse and manufacturing building, and there's a 30,000 square foot addition proposed on the south side of that building. Additionally, there is a bulk shed that's proposed, 9,450 square feet, and that bulk shed will be to store lumber and building materials and to accommodate any overflow material storage. In the 30,000 square foot warehouse addition, the business has grown, and the primary purpose of that addition is storage for interior millwork, doors, cabinets, and windows. To go along with the expansion of the use on the site, they're proposing to add 46 parking spaces to meet the parking standards of the zoning ordinance. They're adding a paved and curbed truck loading and staging area on the south side of the site. It had previously been vegetation, and they're, they want to pave that area and have it as staging on the south side. They're also adding two fuel tanks on the south side of the site. I believe they're diesel fuel tanks for fueling the, the trucks and other equipment. The, the main item that we're still working with on this and where there's mainly a discretionary item is regarding the screening. Section 5.08 of the zoning ordinance allows for the planning commission to approve a substitute for lumber yard screening. And the zoning ordinance requires lumber yards to be surrounded by a masonry wall six feet in height. And back in 2004, the planning commission allowed for an alternative type of screening with a chain link fence on the west side, the vegetative screening on the, on the south side, and a decorative fence on the east side. And so, the applicant proposes to replace the eight-foot chain link fence on the west side. We recommend approval of that and the continuation of that barrier because the property to the west is vacant and it's owned general industrial, same as the subject site. The general industrial is our most intensive industrial zone. On the south side, the applicant proposes the removal of the previously vegetated area and planting 40 upright junipers along that line where there are no curb cuts or utilities. The species of juniper that they've proposed get to a range of 15 to 25 feet in height and have a mature spread of eight to 12 feet. So, at the mature growth, we would anticipate a, a green screen between their site and the site to the south. Even if it's the same site, we don't always know, it'll be in the same ownership and who the future user to the south may be. So, that vegetative buffer would give a visual buffer. And then finally, on the east side, the plans show a continuation of the decorative aluminum fence going southward all the way to the southern lot line with a fence height of seven feet, eight inches. The intent of the lumber yard screening standard is to provide a visual barrier around the storage area, and for that reason, we recommend that the plans include instead a solid opaque fence along the east side of the site that will run from the north side of the proposed bulk shed to the southeast corner. And the reason for us recommending that is that it would provide a visual barrier from the LI-zoned industrial park to the east. And LI is the light industrial district, it's the, one step down the, a lesser intense district than general industrial. And there's also an industrial park use that is developing to the east on Research Drive. So, we believe at this time, the solid opaque fence would be more appropriate than, than a transparent decorative aluminum fence. Regarding the other standards of the ordinance, most of the other standards are met and compliance is shown on the site plan. There are some things that are relatively minor in nature that can be handled between the applicant and staff with regarding some plan notes, some landscaping, fixing any kind of discrepancies or questions we have there. Same with some items with the lighting, confirming the parking calculations, and confirming the enclosure for the trash compactor. Those are items that are attainable for compliance with the ordinance, it's just a matter of the plans having a little bit more detail. And sometimes with industrial plans, there's additional follow-up details that have to be included. So, those, we feel, are relatively minor. So, with that, our recommendation is approval of the site plan amendment for Mann's Lumber at the subject site, including approval of the proposed fencing and screening on the west and south sides of the site, subject to the following two conditions. First, revising the plans to include a solid opaque fence along the east side of the site from the north side of the proposed bulk shed to the southeast corner. And two, making necessary plan revisions noted in the staff report for storage location and height notes, landscaping, lighting, parking, and trash compactor enclosure. That concludes our staff report, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Commissioner Charia, did you have any comments on this?
No concerns or comments, thank you.
Commissioner Foster?
None for me, thank you.
Commissioner Weber?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Commissioner Zubor?
I am excited to know that Mann's is going to be putting in a trust manufacturing facility locally, that's awesome. Other than that, I have no concerns.
Commissioner Watkins?
Questions at this time?
Sorry?
No questions.
Oh, no questions, okay. I just have one question. Patrick, let's see, let me go to the thing here. Okay, we're talked about the screening. Let's see, okay, so enclosed with a six-foot-high masonry wall. Is that, is a six-foot-high, is that a standard for an instant like that, for that type of use? It seems like that should be higher than that when you're, when you're screening, you know, storage, you know, of materials, you know, which we allow outside storage for, for those facilities. But it seems to me that, that the wall should be higher than six feet?
The, the six-foot, that's an ordinance standard for the masonry wall. Other uses, I don't know if there are uses necessarily in, in Canton's ordinance, but I've seen uses in other ordinances where sometimes the, the height of the wall goes up to eight feet, or the height of a fence may go to eight feet, depending on what is being screened, whether it's an intensive storage use or a junkyard or something that is visually impactful where a higher barrier is warranted.
The reason I ask that is because, you know, the, the mixed-use designation for basically all of Michigan Avenue would mean that they might be adjacent to a use that, you know, is not like theirs, and most of the time, we battle with screening the, the different types of uses from one from the, the others, particularly in a situation where, where they have, you know, a lot of storage, a lot of outside storage. So, I was just wondering if six feet is practical in a, in a manner like that?
Well, on the, on the south side, with the proposed evergreen junipers, those will grow higher than that, so that's, and I think, given the condition of that southern lot line, I think that's, that's probably appropriate. But if we're looking at that eastern lot line, the maximum height of storage in, for lumber yards is eight feet high for outdoor storage, so eight feet is the max height. So, with a, any kind of a fence or wall, probably not higher, we probably wouldn't need it any higher than eight feet.
Than eight feet, right.
The ordinance standard, I don't know why the ordinance has six-foot wall when the piles are eight feet, maybe it's just the angle of sight and the visual impactfulness.
Yeah, I, I would, I would think it would be eight feet. Other than that, I, I see no problem with, with this project, with this expansion. Anybody have any other comments or concerns?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to recommend approval of the site plan amendment for Mann's Lumber at 472-555-MichiganAv, parcel number 131-99-0008-003, including approval of the proposed fencing and screening on the west and south sides of the site, subject to the following conditions. One, revising the plans to include a solid opaque fence along the east side of the site from the north side of the proposed bulk shed to the southeast corner. And two, making necessary plan revisions noted in the staff report for storage location and height notes, landscaping, lighting, parking, and compactor enclosure.
Okay, now, can we make that a designation as part of the motion to make that screening eight feet tall?
Yeah, you can specify a fence height. And before that, I do want to clarify one thing is that I inadvertently added the word "recommend." This is, because it's a site plan amendment, the planning commission has discretion for approval decisions, so rather than a recommendation to the board, I, I recommend taking out the word "recommend" so that it's an action by the planning commission. But...
I, I, I move to amend my motion.
Okay, so, it's going to be amended to not be a recommendation, but also to...
To approve the site plan amendment, and if you'd like to make the fence or the screening eight feet tall, I am open to that.
Right.
Wait a minute, Patrick, you said that's the ordinance standard, is six feet?
Yeah, the ordinance requires a six-foot-high masonry wall.
Six-foot minimum?
I think it just says six feet, I'll double-check the, the language on that.
Let's hear.
Okay, so... The statement from the applicant was the willingness to go eight feet with some kind of solid fence as long as they didn't have to do masonry. And then, going back to the ordinance, I'm reading it, it states that the entire site exclusive of access drive shall be enclosed with a six-foot-high masonry wall, so it doesn't specify a minimum, it just says six-foot.
For masonry?
If, if we're going to do masonry, then I guess it doesn't matter.
Yeah, if it were masonry, I, I don't think there would be discretion to go higher than six feet if it were a masonry wall. If it's, if there's a, if, the planning commission can consider modifications, and this section states that it can be reviewed according to section 5.08 of the zoning ordinance, and the planning commission has discretion to modify the standard. So, if the, if the material is being modified to not be masonry, something else, I think also the height can be, can be addressed at the same time, depending on surrounding conditions.
So, with this motion, we're, we're authorizing a, a substitute for masonry with another material, vinyl, maybe? I don't know what the material would be on this, but we, we could go eight feet with that. Something that, obviously, is something that's, that screens storage. That's basically what we're talking about.
I, I believe so, especially if the applicant is willing to do that in lieu of a six-foot masonry wall.
Right, okay. All right, so, that, that should then be part of the motion.
Okay, would you like me to read my motion?
Yes, please.
So, my revised motion is, I move to approve the site plan amendment for Mann's Lumber at 472-555-MichiganAv, said parcel number, including approval of the proposed fencing and screening on the west and south sides of the, of the site, subject to the following conditions. Revising the site plans to include an eight-foot-tall, solid, opaque fence along the east side of the site from the north side of the proposed bulk shed to the southeast corner. And two, making necessary site plan revisions noted in the staff report for storage location and height notes, landscaping, lighting, parking, and compactor enclosure.
Good. Hate to hear support for that.
Support, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Watkins. Any further discussion? Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote on that motion, please?
Sure. My vote calling sheet, Commissioner Charia?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes. Okay, so that motion has been approved by us. Okay, good luck. All right. Let's go on to, what do we have here? Dunkin' Donuts, yes. So, go to my agenda, it's not easier to read from that. Okay, Dunkin' Donuts, where we're considering a commercial site plan on the parcel which is located on the east side of Hagerty Road between Michigan Avenue and Old Michigan Avenue. Proposed use is a fast-food restaurant with a drive-through. Patrick, could you give us some detail?
Sure, thank you. This is an item that was before the planning commission back in January, a couple months ago, for special land use approval for the drive-through restaurant, and the planning commission recommended approval, and the township board subsequently approved the special land use for the site. And so, the applicants have come back with a site plan that includes many of the finished details, some of which were on the special land use plan, and others, we are waiting some additional details. One of the items that we want to bring up is the access management. One of the conditions of special land use review is that there, there be included a stop bar on Hagerty Road at the intersection of Old Michigan Avenue, and traffic signs stating do not block intersection along Hagerty Road to allow for turning in and out of Old, Old Michigan Avenue to the site. According to the applicants, they've reached out to Wayne County to try to get some feedback on that, to try to get an indication of whether the county would approve that, and the applicants haven't gotten a response back from Wayne County. Sometimes Wayne County doesn't formally provide the response until someone applies for permits, and oftentimes, people don't apply for permits until they have local site plan approval, which is one of the things that county sometimes looks for. So, sometimes it's a chicken-and-egg situation in terms of being able to get county feedback but needing site plan approval to, to get to that point, which is why we continue to make this recommendation in the proposed motion at the end so that this carries forward with site plan review. It's part of the special land use, but also we want to carry that forward, that the stop bar and the do not block intersection signs be included if they're, if they're acceptable to Wayne County. The next item is with the parking. There are 16 parking spaces proposed. Based on the calculations of the zoning ordinance, there's a minimum of 17 required. Based on looking at the parking generation manual of ITE, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, it looks like the average peak demand for a similar-sized coffee and donut shop with a drive-through would have a peak of much lower, anywhere from 10 spaces to 16 spaces on its busiest day for the average peak. Also, looking at a number of aerial photos for the Dunkin' Donuts on the south side of Ford Road, that's just west of Hagerty, the number of spaces is far fewer than 16 at that location, and that's a bigger restaurant. Therefore, we believe the proposed number of spaces at 16 is sufficient for the proposed use. For the landscaping and screening, there's a minimum landscape depth of 20 feet required for the frontage along a road, and this is one where it's very difficult to meet based on the topography of the site and the retaining wall that has to be constructed. So, there are some areas along Michigan Avenue and Hagerty Road where it's less than 20 feet wide for, for that width. And even though the width is narrower than 20 feet in some cases because of the necessity for a retaining wall, there is the attempt to berm it. The berm's not necessarily three feet high as required in the ordinance in some of those areas, but there is an attempt to provide some topography there and some, some relief to that area. So, their landscape plan shows the topography where they try to do some berming there just to make it appear as many of the other berm frontages that we see here. Also, there's a modification request for the foundation landscape depth of 10 feet in some of the areas where the site is very tight, and there have been variances approved for the front yard setbacks. So, the building is, is smaller and squeezed and tight, and as a result, some of those foundation landscape depths are, are narrower as a result. So, those are two modifications in terms of landscape depth that are proposed by the applicant, and those are discretionary decisions by the planning commission. Beyond those modifications requested for the landscaping, all the numerical counts are met on the landscape plans, and there have been trees added in many areas along the wall to try to soften the appearance of the wall and try to get more trees along that area, especially along the north side of the wall, the south side of Michigan Avenue, where the wall's pretty high, and there's a number of shrubs and trees in addition to a little bit of berming to try to soften the appearance of that wall. The last item that I want to mention is that for the dumpster enclosure, a condition of special land use approval was to limit the dumpster pickup times to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and a note has been added to the plan sheet to that effect. So, with that, our recommendation is approv- So with that, our recommendation is approval of the site plan for a fast-food drive-through restaurant on the subject parcel, subject to the removal of the light fixtures on the alongside Old Michigan Avenue. There's three light fixtures that don't necessarily need to be there. The other conditions being approval of the landscape modifications proposed on sheet L1 for the foundation landscape depth and the frontage berm dimensions, and the installation of stop bars and do-not-block-intersection signs if permitted by Wayne County. That concludes our report, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Obviously, we have no project sponsor here tonight.
We have one on Zoom. I can bring her up here.
Oh, okay, wonderful.
Okay, we have Becky Klein from PEA Group representing the applicant. She didn't necessarily have her hand up, but Becky, you're allowed to speak if you want to take yourself off mute.
Yes, good evening. Yeah, I'm here to answer any questions you may have on this site. As previously mentioned, it's a challenging site in terms of topography and configuration of the shape of the site and the fact that it has three frontages. I think we have a real good compromise here in terms of functionality and meeting at least the spirit of the ordinances, if not exactly the letter.
So why don't we just open the floor to the, we've we discussed this project ad nauseam, so I don't I don't think there's anything new. However, if anything pops out to the commission, anything that has come through, anything at all? No?
Good.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, do that.
You look distressed.
We're way past my bedtime. It's not distressed.
What is yours?
Okay, I move to recommend approval, or am I approving? Am I?
Recommending.
Recommending, thank you. I move to recommend approval of the site plan for a fast-food drive-through restaurant on parcel number 142-99-0020-000, subject to the following conditions: removal, number one, removal of the three G2 light fixtures along the sidewalk of Old Michigan Ave., number two, approval of the landscape modifications proposed on sheet L1.0 for the foundation landscape depth and frontage berm dimensions pursuant to section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance, and three, installation of stop bars and do-not-block-intersection signs if permitted by Wayne County.
Support, Mr. Chair.
Support? Okay, all right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Watkins. Any further discussion? Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Charia?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
That's a yes for me, too. All right, so we've got a lot of stuff to send to staff, keep them busy. Looks like there's about seven items, two of which are, we do every year, the seasonal sales permits. Do I hear a motion to send those items to staff?
So moved, oh, support.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Zuber. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. All right, and then we've got a public hearing on April 4th, April 4th, for Mr. Mr. Carwash and Zippy Carwash. Boy, we're getting a lot of car washes in here. Yeah, he's he said we're gonna be deluged. Okay, so do I hear a motion to set the public hearing for those two items for April 4th?
Oh, sorry, so moved.
Do I hear support?
Support.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Charia. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. All right, moving right along, we have bylaws. What about the bylaws, Patrick?
Are we gonna bring those up here? All right, go ahead.
Hello, everyone. How are you? Thank you so much. So I'm here to introduce an update to the planning commission bylaws. It was included in your packet along with this cover memo explaining what we've been working on, why this is important, and some of the changes that we have incorporated. And for your reference, we also included the the current planning commission bylaws, which were last adopted in 1998. So as I noted, the Michigan Planning Enabling Act allows for the planning commission to create their own bylaws. You have those already, but they are severely out of date. For instance, they refer to an act that was repealed back in 2008. So it's time to bring these into into the modern era. And in looking and making sure that the planning commission bylaws are in compliance with all state statutes, we all wanted to bring in a couple of updates, and I have highlighted them in the memo. Number one, we, this is bringing into a practice that we already already do, but it codifies it into into the bylaws, an orientation. So when any new planning commissioner comes on board, before they have their first planning commission meeting, they'll meet with staff in an informal way. Commissioner Watkins had the pleasure of of meeting with us before his first meeting, and it was an opportunity for us to go through some of the history, where we are in some of our large-scale projects, answer any questions he may have, kind of go over anything that that might be outstanding before the before the meeting. So that way, it runs as smoothly as possible for the new commissioner. They get to know us, we get to know them. It it works well in in all ways. Number two, a new commissioner training. So a lot of times, new commissioners come in and they have ideas on how they want things to be, but it might not necessarily be in compliance with the authority that a planning commissioner may have. And so this gives an opportunity for every new member who comes on board, training and access to the materials that will make them a success on this board. The Citizen Planner, through the Michigan State University Extension, offers a comprehensive 15-hour in-depth training course that has served well for a lot of new members that are coming on in other communities I've worked in. And as part of this, we would ask them, any new commissioner, to complete that within six months of their appointment date. Number four, continuing education. In order to make sure that the commission is up to date and up to speed on all new planning topics, trends, things that are going around not only regionally here in or in the state of Michigan, but also nationally, we have included a requirement that all commissioners are required to complete at least six hours of continued education per year, or at least 18 hours per their three-year term. These will all be provided to you or notified to you via email on those types of training opportunities that you may find interesting, either via webinar or in-person conferences and things like that. And six hours really gives you a wide breadth of topics that you might want to to attend to. So it could come from SEMCOG, it could come from MSU. Certainly, we could have in-person training courses through a work session. You know, there's a lot of variety of ways that you could achieve those types, achieve that, achieve that requirement. But it just makes sure that all commissioners are coming and have an understanding of all the the planning topics that are currently going on. And finally, the order of business. We've modified this slightly to allow for some public comment. We do allow that, obviously, for public hearings, but there are opportunities for someone to come in and and address the planning commission about something that's not on the agenda, and so this just gives them the opportunity to do that in in a public meeting. One other thing, it's a minor, minor change that we're going to be doing, but we're proposing to amend the agenda ever so slightly, and it's mostly because the new business, the staff referral, we're just going to be moving that towards the end of the, excuse me, towards the end of the agenda. We've had a lot of comments and questions about the staff referral and what that means, and there have been confusion on applicants thinking that they've missed a meeting. And even though it was something that, you know, you do these in a bunch and you just send them over to staff, and we've already, you know, a lot of times we're already in the process of discussing these things, but we've had panic calls the next day or a day after saying, what did I miss? What did I miss? And then it's just a lot of making, you know, making sure that they understand that they haven't missed anything. So if we modify the the agenda just a little bit, it might provide a little bit more clarity, not only to the developers, applicants, but also to the public, thinking that they didn't miss something.
What would you, would you call it something different than staff referrals?
Well, what we would say is, you know, these are the items that are coming, maybe coming on the next agenda or future agenda meetings. And we would put it near the end of the the meeting, and then we could modify and note that which ones are being scheduled for public hearings and things like that. So it would still be included as a future project that would be coming up before you, but it wouldn't necessarily be on the agenda as an action item. Does that make sense?
So we wouldn't, we wouldn't actually go through the process of having a motion and approval and all that? Because I I always thought that that was just a token gesture to get the the project on the staff's agenda. It's not, you're gonna do it anyway, right? I mean, but so we don't officially have to accept it and give it to staff, is what you're saying?
Correct. And and most of the time, we've already been looking at a lot of these. So it's cart-horse kind of situation, so, but I understand that a lot of people like to see what might be coming up on future agendas, and so that way, that component will still be included on the agenda. It just won't be an action item to confuse anybody.
Okay, so so basically, you know, what we're gonna announce up here is just coming soon to a, to a boardroom in your town. Okay.
Certainly, and and the ones that are already scheduled for public hearings, you know, for special land use or rezonings or et cetera, you know, we'd make sure to include the public hearing is scheduled for such-and-such date, blah, blah, blah. So that way, anyone who is coming to a meeting, if they think there's something on the radar, oh, I want to see what that is, they'll know that the public hearing has already been set. And so the planning commission doesn't have to direct staff to do that. We already have have completed that.
Going, okay. And then on the order of business, the public comment, and I'm and I'm fine with that. I would prefer they they dealt with what we were dealing with that evening, but I understand, you know, sometimes people want to just get something off their chest for, in general, or something that went on in the past. That's not actionable, right? In other words, we don't, we would listen to them, but that's it. We don't have to to do anything about that, because they could bring up who knows what, right?
Correct.
And we're not in a position to even talk about that.
Correct. It would be an action, it would not, I'm sorry, it would not be an actionable item. They would be able to stand up and speak, and and you could dictate the the amount of time, three to five minutes, whatever. They say their speed, their their piece, and if it's something that we as staff need to look into or discuss with them or whatever, then it gives us the opportunity to hear them, and we can follow up with them at a later date. But that's not a point for you as the commission to engage in a debate.
Engage in that, okay. And then finally, on the continuing education. So staff is gonna present to us opportunities to get get these hours in. Will they be, you know, like as a group type of thing, or will they just be individual?
Both. I mean, so if there's a seminar or a webinar or something that we feel that this this body would would benefit from, you know, we're going into the master plan planning process, so if there's something related to sustainable design or, I'm blanking on anything else, any other topic on my mind right now, but if there was something that was pertinent to the planning commission and how we move forward with with site plan review or or long-term planning, we would send those to you in an email. You let us know if you want to attend. We register you, you know, the township would pay for any any fees, so that doesn't come out of your pocket. And then, you know, you attend, and if if you so choose during planning commission, you can update the rest of the commissioners on what you learned, what you found interesting, how this could benefit the township, blah, blah, blah.
So if Doug attends one of these seminars and then comes back and make and gives us a briefing, that's like we all attended, too, right?
Well, I guess it depends on how long his presentation is.
I have a question about that. That's a lot of time, six hours a year. I mean, I spend, I only have to do 12 hours of continuing ed, to continuing ed to maintain my architect's license. Six hours is a lot for a volunteer position, in my opinion. That is a lot of time. I mean, given how much time we spend here, too, you know?
And as a professional, if there are things that would cross over, and if there's collect courses that you're taking or things that you see that that would be pertinent to here, you can, you can double up on that end.
Yeah, I'm sure for me, but.
Oh, great, yes.
The rest of us.
That gives her an edge.
The board here, that's a lot of time. That is a lot. Six hours a year is a lot of education. Is there any negotiation on that?
How was that, how was that derived?
Yeah, how did you guys determine that?
How was that derived, that six hours a year? Eighteen dollars, 18 hours for every three years?
Well, these actually came from, this was a policy that I had enacted in in one of the communities that I worked in, so it was five to six hours per year. And really, it wasn't, it wasn't an issue for for any of them to to attend. We did, with, especially with COVID, you know, with a lot of webinars and things, they were able to, most of them were two to three, three hours each, so there's just three webinars to attend to. And a lot of them are recorded, so those are things that we could, if they're recorded, we could send to you at a later date, and you could could watch at your your convenience.
I think we can all accomplish that. That's not a, even.
I don't know. Does anybody else feel like I do?
No, I was gonna say, I think if you have the flexibility of it being virtual or being able to watch whenever you can, that might be better for some people. I think if it were, you had to go to a thing or you had to do it at a specific time, that might be very complicated for people who have other jobs.
And maybe six years.
Or two other jobs.
And many of these, many of the webinars now that we're, we've been dealing with COVID, and there's a lot more remote, a lot of these webinars, you can attend in person, but then after, if you've registered, they'll give you a link, you can still watch it afterwards. So some of this might, some of this will be on staff in terms of identifying opportunities, especially ones that are self-guided or, you know, more up of, more up the alley of what we're working on, to send links to planning commissioners, anything you're interested in, to watch the videos or sign up for any any training. The planning commission has a training budget, so we've got a lot of opportunities to sign up for any paid training as well.
Just to me, I mean, again, I, you know, everybody has a limited number of hours, and when we signed up, I didn't realize there was gonna be an education requirement, too. So it seems like a lot. And then when you've got, you've got it listed in the, at least in the the notes here, it's six hours per year or at least 18 hours per three-year term. So is that six hours a year and 18 hours per three years, or are you saying I could do my 18 hours all at the end of my term?
Well, I mean, that wouldn't be ideal, but, you know, if if there's a situation where you could only get three hours because of X, Y, and Z, your term or your position on the commission isn't in any kind of jeopardy. There's opportunity for you to make it up to the next year or the subsequent year.
Have an extra six hours?
It's a good idea to have training, but I'm just considering that it should not be a deterrent to somebody who plans to volunteer in the future, that it's an additional six hours every year. You know, that might just throw some, somebody off and say, let's not volunteer. So that that's, that comes to my mind, you know, it's it's a lot of education.
I I could see a fewer number of hours personally, but six seems, like I said, since I, I mean, it's a professional license, I only need 12. Sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, 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 I was gonna say to the chair, just, just procedurally, would it, I don't know, when would this start? Would we, would there be any grandfathered in commission members prior to this being enacted, or when do we want this to take place?
Well, it would be, it would take place moving forward. So any, any new commissioner, it would start, new commissioner training would start for any new future commissioners, but the the continued education would start after the bylaws have been adopted. So they're appointed in January, is that correct? December, okay. So it would be, it would take effect this year?
Bylaws be adopted?
With the chair, one last question, and then do, I'm assuming there's an opportunity for us to be able to modify the bylaw as such, correct?
Of course.
I just wanted to make a quick note about the public comment. So the township board does public comment, both when an agenda item is up for discussion. And again, at the end of the meeting, with, at the end of the meeting, it is for non-agenda items. So would this be similar?
Yes, this would be for non, the public comment section itself would be for non-agenda items. If the planning commission, outside of a public hearing, wanted to take public comment on a specific agenda item, site plan or or any other discussion item, that's up to the discretion of the planning commission. that's up to the discretion of the planning commission. The public comment?
Something that...
I've never been, I've never been to a planning commission meeting where they've had non-agenda items open for public comment. I see it at township meetings and city council meetings, but I've never seen, I've never seen a planning commissioner or zoning board do that.
Well, I've seen it at many of them. It's just an opportunity for additional public comment if someone wants to talk about something that doesn't get elevated to the township board, if they had a specific planning discussion item that they wanted to talk about here.
As long as it's not an actionable, you know, necessity, I've got no problem with that.
And a lot of times, you know...
Basically letting them spew.
For a designated amount of time, no difference than during a public hearing.
Right, exactly.
And keeping it to the end of the meeting, as we have proposed, you know, there's...
Okay, so...
It's not usually utilized.
Getting back to the continuing education, so that would begin for us, that would begin when?
When the bylaws are adopted. So if you were to adopt them tonight, then they would be in effect for this year. If that is your choice.
Can you send the commission some information on different, like continuing education courses and how long they are and like the timing, so we can have that information prior to taking the vote on it? I think that might be helpful for folks.
Absolutely.
Table this for further discussion?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. So do I hear a motion to table that discussion?
I move to table the discussion of the planning commission bylaws.
Support.
All right. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Watkins to table the planning, the bylaws discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I think you skipped over to, Aaron, the absences part of this, or maybe I missed it.
The what?
I might have fallen asleep. No offense to your presentation, but I think you missed, you didn't, you didn't highlight the absences.
About absences.
My apologies. So the absences component is, anytime a commissioner is going to be absent, we just ask that you notify planning, community planner, planning staff of your intended absence, so that way, we can excuse you on the record during the minutes. If there are three consecutive absences, then the township board, after a public hearing, may consider your position delinquent or, and may vacate your, the seat. The planning commission has the option of postponing a decision on whether or not to excuse until the following meeting, if they so determine that there may be just reason or cause to postpone that excusal.
But that's unexcused. So now...
Unexcused, yeah.
The definition of excused is just basically reporting prior to the meeting that you're not going to be there.
Correct.
Like Commissioner Singh tonight, who said he wasn't going to be here, he was going to be out of the country, right?
Correct, absolutely.
So that would be unexcused.
That would be excused.
I mean, yeah, that would be excused.
Yes.
We also heard from Commissioner O'Conne and Commissioner Egenberger before the meeting that they were unable to attend, so that would be excused as well.
So all three of them would be excused.
Basic politeness is really what it gets down to.
Yep. Also, so we can ensure we have a quorum before the meeting.
Well, yeah. Quorum for us is five, right?
Quorum is five, yes. And then also, it allows for commissioners to excuse an absence for the meeting after. So if, for example, someone didn't attend tonight, they didn't give prior notice, but they had maybe a personal situation come up at the last minute, they're not able to attend, the planning commission can still excuse that at the next meeting. So the intent there is not to try to penalize anyone or keep count. It's just to make sure people notice the planning commission and give opportunities for after-the-fact notice if there's last minute, things like that.
So a situation like tonight, we were wondering if we were going to have a quorum. Do you alert the petitioners that we may not have a full panel tonight and give them the option to, like the rezoning thing? The petitioner may very, wanted to have the benefit of having a full panel to have that voted on. Do you give, do you notify them that we're not going to have nine commissioners tonight, or?
No, typically not. For a board of nine, it's, I don't want to say it's frequent, but oftentimes, we'll have less than nine. The board we typically do that with is the zoning board of appeals. It's a board of five members, and to take any action, it takes three affirmative votes. So if someone is applying for a variance with the zoning board of appeals, and there's, say, three ZBA members, they would need all three votes to go in favor of that variance for them to get their variance. So three out of three, that can sometimes be hard if they don't have a full panel of five. So sometimes, they ask to defer that just because that's a time-sensitive decision on a land application, whereas something like this, we knew there'd be three absences, but with six, it was a quorum. Had the planning commission been a split vote, if it was, say, a four-to-two vote or a three-to-three vote, we would not have had a majority. And at that point, what we would have done is we would have deferred the action item to the following meeting, possibly have another public hearing so that more commissioners could be here to hear public comment and then vote at that time. So if we were looking at that this evening, we would have just tabled it at that time if we thought there was going to be less than a majority on the motion.
Further discussion? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
You do.
What's going on with the master plan? I mean, we're getting, we're almost into the second quarter now, and we haven't started anything yet.
We have, we're issuing a general request for proposal that we published last week. We had been working on a little bit more specific proposal, but after some back and forth, we decided that it was in our best interest just to go out for a general RFP. So that takes a little bit extra time. It took longer than we wanted it to. But we think that with a general RFP, we're headed in the right direction. We'll probably get a better proposal as a result, and we'll get some different proposals, we hope, that'll give us a few different points of view in response to the RFP that we put out there. So the closing date for the proposal, I think, is in about three weeks, two and a half or three weeks.
Who's asking for proposals from whom?
General Planning Consulting for the master plan.
Okay, got it. So...
Is that something that I know, you know, I know that it's not your job to publicize something like that, but I would think, and based upon what we saw here tonight, I would think the township would really want to have that publicized, that we're going through that process when we start, you know, so that people can either decide, oh, I don't want to have anything to do with it, or, yeah, I'd like to be there and hear some of what they have to say, that kind of thing. I think it's always dangerous when it appears that things, decisions are made behind closed doors or in secret, you know.
Smoke-filled rooms, right?
Yeah, which we know has not happened here, but you could tell a lot of the audience tonight, you know, who've been in the township a long time, and were not even aware, or at least maybe it just went by them, that this was all about a master plan and that we had that on the books to move from R to R1 a long, long time ago, and that it was one of those things that we could do should the situation arise. But they seemed to, you know, act blindsided, like, oh, they just came up with this.
I think it was only one person that acted that way. I don't think it was the general.
Well, but then you have a lot of new people in Canton, too, that weren't around for the master planning process when it originally, when it took place. So it's up to the township, really, to let people know that this does go on. You know, they may not have been part of it, but it does go on, and that we're not doing this behind closed doors.
For the average person, they don't pay attention to anything that we do until it impacts them.
Until they think it affects them, huh?
And a perfect example of that was when we looked at the property for the two hotels. I mean, those people, I mean, that property could have been built, developed with those hotels, and those people in that subdivision over there, even though that subdivision really is fairly new, people, like you said, people don't look at that, so even when they're buying a house, they don't necessarily look at that until it affects them. So...
Well, we have a motion on the floor to adjourn.
I support that.
Me, too.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's get out of here.